All set? Okay, good evening. Today is Wednesday, May 20th, 2020. It's now 7:15 PM. This is a meeting of the Needham Planning Board, Needham, Massachusetts. This is a meeting being held virtually due to the coronavirus situation here in Massachusetts. As I begin this meeting, I'm gonna ask for everyone's patience as I read a script, which will take somewhere between five and seven minutes probably. And then we'll proceed to our agenda. All right? Thank you. First, permit me to confirm quickly that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. From the planning staff, Lee Newman.
Present.
And Alex Cle.
Present.
Board members, there are five, including myself. We have Jean McKnight.
Present.
Ted Owens.
Here.
Paul Alpert.
Here.
Bruce Eisenhut.
Here.
And planning board candidate who is running in the upcoming election, Adam Block.
Here.
With respect to agenda item number one regarding the Needham Farmers Market, Jeffrey Friedman.
Here.
And Tom Geman.
Here.
Thank you. With respect to agenda item number two regarding the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, we have John Fogerty.
I'm here.
Thank you. We have Elizabeth Gerlach.
I am here.
Great. Nancy Hoffman.
I'm here.
Thank you. Michael Kelly.
Here.
And Devin Kinsella.
Also here.
And our third agenda item regarding 100 West Street zoning proposal, we have attorney Roy Kramer.
I'm here.
And attorney Evans Huber.
Present.
We have Lee Bloom and Ted Doyle.
Present.
Here.
They are from LCB Senior Living. We have David Kelly, project engineer.
Present.
Erin Fredette.
Here.
Erin is traffic engineer. And project architects, we have Anthony Viverito.
Here.
And we have for fiscal impact report presentation, Mark Fugier. Is Mark with us?
I see him on the screen, but he's muted.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was here before.
Mark, if you can hear us, can you unmute just to let us know that you can hear us? And we can hear you? I'll come back to Mark. Louise Gianakis from Gulston Stores.
Here.
Great. Mark is the only one.
Here, I'm sorry.
No, okay, great, thank you. Okay. Did I miss anyone? Okay. All right, good evening. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely, which is being done tonight. That order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will allow public comment. For this meeting, the Needham Planning Board is convening by Zoom app as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and all attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair, I note otherwise. Before we turn to the first item on our agenda, please let me cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. First, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember also to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. After members have spoken, I will afford public comment as follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all those who wish to comment, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comment. Again, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. I will now ask for a motion from a member of the board to automatically continue this meeting to June 2nd at 7:00 PM with the same Zoom ID number if, if any technical difficulty should arise that keeps us from continuing.
So moved.
Thank you. Five seconds.
Paul Alpert.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, I'm gonna call the roll. Bruce? I think you're muted, Bruce.
Yes.
Thank you. Ted? I, I heard that. Paul?
Yes.
And Jean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll now proceed directly to the first item on our agenda, which is an agenda item for a de minimis change to the Needham Farmers Market. We have before us in our packet, a draft proposed decision. And we also had, I'm not sure if these items were already in our record. We had some new correspondents since last meeting from Jeff Friedman and from Tara Gurge of our Health Department. Was there anything else new, Lee?
We haven't actually opened this matter at all, so all the information that is in front of you needs to be presented at this meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. I didn't, I don't have in front of me all the prior farmers market stuff. So Lee, can you take me through the list of what is in, what has been presented to us and is in our file?
Okay, so what we have is, is basically an application from the applicant, which is dated April 16th. We have initially a first schematic drawing, which shows a proposed layout for the farmers, for the farmers market. And then we have a letter from the applicant dated April 23rd, 2020, which actually describes the project itself. And then we have a copy of, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture and Resources guidance relative to how farmers markets should be operated under the COVID-19 circumstance. Next, we have a second letter from the applicant dated May 12th, which talks about some modifications they want to make to the application in light of comments received from the Board of Health. Then we have a new drawing, which was revised, which shows a reconfigured layout for the farmers market dated May 11th or May 12th, excuse me, with a list of the vendors, their location, and setup standards. Next, we have a copy of a license agreement between the Needham Farmers Market and the Town of Needham dated January 31st, 2018. This was for the previous period that the farmers market was operational. Next, we have a copy of the order of the Commissioner of Public Health for Farmers Markets Farm Stands. This was issued by Governor Baker in terms of how a farmers markets are to operate during the COVID-19 circumstance. Then we have a copy of the earlier decision that the planning board issued for the farmers market dated April 25th, 2017.
I think we have some.
Copy, basically, copy, I think, of the amendment to that, to that, to that base decision. And then we have the comments from the John Schittler from the Needham Police Department on the farmers market proposal dated April 28th, 2020. We have comments from the Town Engineering Department on this project dated May, May the 4th, where they indicate they have no comment or objection. We next have a letter from, this is repeating. Next have a letter from the Board of Health dated May 4th, 2020, where they identified a series of concerns or issues. And then we have a follow-up letter from the Board of Health, I think in response to changes that were made to the plan, indicating that they're now okay with the proposed changes. And I think that's it.
Okay. So we're gonna open the meeting now, and I'm gonna turn to Mr. Friedman first to make a presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Jeff Friedman, President of Needham Farmers Market. With me is Tom Geman. He's the operations manager for Needham Farmers Market, as well as a board member, director. For its nice season, Needham Farmers Market has applied to renew and amend its special permit. This is a one-year permit for 2020 only. The town common is scheduled to be renovated next year. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Baker declared a public health emergency, as you know. He declared farmers markets as essential services, quote unquote, that are exempted from closing due to COVID-19 because they provide fresh and locally sourced food to Massachusetts residents. Needham Farmers Market has worked closely with the Health Department to develop a plan for health and safety. And this has been submitted to the planning board. I would note also that the Board of Health approved this as well. The town, and the town manager signed off on the application for the town as property owner. Needham Farmers Market has removed paragraphs two and three of the application involving an increase of two new vendors and two new artists as pursuant to the agreement with the Health Department. There will be no music, and there will be no artists at the market. Paragraphs one, four, and five would remain in the application. These were supported by the Health Department, and that's very important because they felt that these would serve the, the needs of public health. Paragraph one is the expansion from, to a small part of the town common beside the central walkway leading to Garrity's Way. Four, the setup time for vendors would start one hour earlier at 9:00 AM instead of 10:00 AM. And five, temporary parking for two vehicles on Highland next to Garrity's Way during setup and breakdown for vendors. I might, again, emphasize that the Health Department, Tara Gurge for the Health Department, felt that these were very important for public safety. So, and if I could ask, I don't know, this might be out of order, Tom Geman, you know, we're working together on this, if you might want to illustrate that or give extra reasons, Tom?
I will certainly recognize Mr. Geman. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think, Tom?
This is, this is Tom. So I can do a screen share and give you a schematic of the layout, if you like.
Let's try it.
Are you able to see?
No, not yet.
Okay, one moment, please.
The members of the board have seen the schematic, it's in our package, but it would be helpful if you could share it for others.
Okay, then it's not necessary.
Well, it would be helpful for members of the public if you can make it work.
Okay, I'm, let's see if you can do this.
Thank you. I got it.
Are you able to see the schematic?
Yes, yes.
So what we're proposing here is to expand the market so that we can observe the social distancing and the site density requirements for precautions against the COVID virus. So that puts the walkway as part of our plan, where we have tent locations that are spaced. And Garrity Way as part of the plan, where we've removed some vendor locations in order to provide the spacing. So fundamentally, this gives us a total vendor capacity somewhat lower than what, what we previously had. We're also marking the space with directionals. So we'll be taping on the asphalt, indicating directions of flow and spacing indicators. And all of this adds up to additional setup time in the beginning of the market. So beginning at nine o'clock instead of previously 10 o'clock. We will also be positioning people, our staff members in the market space to maintain order and to make sure people aren't clumping or stopping to engage in group conversations. So that essentially changes the market layout, which is illustrated in the schematic. So does that make sense? Are there any questions about that?
Well, we're saving our questions for the end of the presentation. So whenever you're done, I'll, I'll turn to questions. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, great. Jeff, did you have anything more?
No, other than we would ask that the board grant the special permit to Needham Farmers Market. We are scheduled to open on June 14th, so that doesn't give us that much time. And so again, we feel that it's warranted and that we have the support of the Health Department and the town manager. And needless to say, the town, I believe that many residents of Needham who are customers of ours support this.
All right, before I turn to questions from the board, let me just ask you, Jeff, have you seen a copy of the draft decision that Lee prepared?
I have.
But do you have any issues or questions with that, or are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it. It's fine.
All right, let me turn to members of the board for questions. I'm gonna start with Ted Owens, please.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Bruce Eisenhut.
I have no questions. I do appreciate the presentation and the schematic. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Paul Alpert.
Um, yes, I, I appreciate the, the work that was done by the farmers market in cooperating with the Board of Health to reach a satisfactory conclusion. I'm, I'm just curious, so, so there are no artists that are planned now. It sounds like based on the governor's current, current order, they're not allowed. But the governor is, is phasing in, hopefully, we won't have steps back. But the governor is phasing in a return to a new normal by the time you close in November. And I'm wondering whether you have any plans, should the governor's orders be modified that would allow the artists to be there to, to expand the project so that if it's allowed, another vendor maybe, or the artists could participate? It sounds like based on the decision that we're going to vote on tonight, that would not be allowed under the special permit, but it's just something that I thought of.
I may?
Yes, please.
No, thank you, Paul. That's a fair question. It's, you know, very difficult to us to speculate what the governor's gonna do. And, and, you know, in terms of how that would, you know, certain parts of the, the, the Commonwealth will open for business. I don't know whether or not that would affect or apply to Needham Farmers Market. Whatever we did would have to be consistent with what the Health Department want, would expect from us. So we would obviously have to consult with them before we made any, any decision to change from the current proposal. But we have not, you know, made any plans or really talked about any changes from what's current. It would be dependent upon what the governor and his executive offices decided, and also, of course, importantly, what the Health Department and the Board of Health would say.
All right, thank you. Jean, did you have a follow-up on this?
I have a follow-up question. My, my issues were the same, having to do with artists. I, I think that there is ambiguity with regard to artists in the, in the wording of the proposed decision. And in the schematic also. If the intention is that the farmers market will not need to come back to the planning board to allow artists, provided that it's clear under whatever rules are set by the governor, and it's clear under whatever rules are set by the Board of Health, that artists are allowed. I think the decision does say that, or at least implies that. However, the schematic seems to, even though it labels tables as for artists, and the notes below it seem to say artists are prohibited. So I want to ask Mr. Friedman and Mr. German to explain what it is, what is their intention with regard to having to come back to the planning board for artists, or wishing they wouldn't need to as long as the governor and the Board of Health were okay with it?
Mr. Friedman?
I think that we would do it either way. I, it would certainly, I'd be supposed to facilitate it if we didn't have to come back to the planning board, but, you know, really, it's, it's what, it'd be important, what the, the planning board itself would desire from us. I guess that if, if, if the governor changed his order, and the Health Department and the Board of Health had no problem with it, I'm not certain what objection there would be, since the reason for taking them out was because of, because the Health, the Board of Health and the governor, you know, basically, wanted that. It was, you know, issues of social distancing. So I don't, frankly, I don't know what, if the Board of, the planning board would have objection.
If I may respond, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Jean.
Clearly, musicians would not be allowed for the near future. I'm one who likes to dance right there on the pavement in front of the music, you know? And I know we don't, we don't want that for the foreseeable future. And on the other hand, just speaking as a planning board member, I, I don't see why we would need to revisit the allowance of artists, the two booths where they're labeled, provided the Board of Health and the governor's order clearly allows booths for artists at farmers markets. So if, if that's the direction we're going, I just think we might need to have the, well, particularly a sketch plan, be, be more clear on that, rather than seeming to completely prohibit it. I have another, another comment, too, if I may.
Before you proceed to that, what would be your suggestion as to how we would incorporate that, your suggestion there? Just to make it a condition that the plan, the sketch plan be updated to be clear on that point?
On the note, note for, under, on the sketch plan, it says note for A1, A2. It says, "We will follow the governor's designation of vendors for farmers market and not allow nonessential vendors as pertaining to farmers markets, as in the case of artists." I would only add, until such time as as artists are clearly allowed under governor's order and state board of whatever, referring to the, to the agencies that supervise these, these markets, and the Needham Board of Health. So that, that footnote, that note allows, doesn't seem to prohibit it completely. And I think the decision actually does, and that's why I say there's ambiguity, because the decision on page three seems, seems to go in the direction of allowing the artists as long as, you know, they're allowed by the governor. On, on item number, number five on page three, it says, "For the requirements of the Needham Health Department, musicians will be eliminated from the farmers market." Period. Clear. No musicians. Furthermore, and then it goes, I'm quoting now from the sentence, "Furthermore, artists are not allowed at farmers markets until such time as Governor Baker allows it." When I read that originally, I thought, okay, so that's fine. Artists can be allowed. We don't have to revisit that ourselves. And then, but then the sketch plan seemed to say they're not allowed.
So would it solve your, would it solve your issue if the plan modification section called for the plan to be modified to reflect that additional language?
Yes.
Okay. Lee, is that an easy enough change to make?
Yes, we can make that change.
Okay, that would, that'd be okay with you, Jeff?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. And you had some other issues?
And Paul raised this issue in the first place, so I wanna make sure.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I don't have a copy of the decision in front of me, but based on what Jean just read, I think that in the decision where she read, if the governor allows it, I think we should add, and the Needham Board of Health. If the governor and, and the Needham Board of Health allow it.
I think that's fine. Okay, that's, okay. I don't think we need to vote on that. Okay, Jean, you had other issues?
Yes. One more, basically just another seeming ambiguity in the proposed decision. In, on page three and page four. On page three, at the very end of item number four, it says, let's see, "And, and to further supervise all vendors, artists, and musicians in following the recommendations of the order and bulletin." Since we're prohibiting musicians, it seems to introduce an ambiguity about whether they actually are allowed to have a mention of them being supervised. And then the same thing, the same words are used in, at the very end of item number five, "And supervise all vendors, artists, and musicians." And supervise all vendors, artists and musicians. So which should just say vendors and artists in both places, not musicians.
Okay. Anything else, Jean?
No.
Okay. All right. So procedurally now, um, if, if all members of the board have posed their questions, I'm going to turn to the public and ask if there are any members of the public listening or watching who would like to be heard or recognized, I'm going to ask you to please raise your hand. I see a list of 24 attendees. And I don't see any raised hands. Alex, are you, if you're listening, do you see any raised hands? Am I missing anything?
I don't see any either.
Okay. I'll just give it another 10 seconds in case someone wants to figure out how to raise their hands technically here.
Um, Marty, I did just want to say, I think there's one person calling in and there's a different way to raise the hand, a person's hand if they're on a phone, and that is star nine. So just, I'm just making that announcement for that person. If you wish to raise your hand now or later, um, just press star nine on your phone and we'll see it.
Thank you, Alex.
Thanks.
Let's give her that person a few seconds at least. Okay. Uh, I'm not seeing anything, so it, it appears there's no member of the public who wish to be recognized. Okay. So, uh, I'm, uh, open for any discussion, uh, unless people are ready to vote and I'm ready to hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, um, we accept the application as a de minimis change.
I'm sorry.
You have a second, Bruce?
I have a second and a friendly amendment.
Please go ahead.
So my friendly amendment is subject to the, uh, language clarifications that set forth by Jean McKnight in the decision and in the schematic.
I think, I think Paul's looking at a two-step motion here. First one is just to close the hearing.
Oh, okay. I thought he was, was it the motion to do a de minimis?
Motion, right. The motion was to accept it as a de minimis change.
Yes, there, there is no hearing associated with this.
Okay. Accept it as de minimis change. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, I'm going to start with Ted.
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I'm also, uh, an I. Okay. Further motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, um, accept the, um, application as presented with the modifications, uh, made after consultation with the Needham Board of Health and with the modifications, uh, discussed, uh, this evening.
And now do I have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. I'm going to ask for a vote again. Same, uh, roll call. Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Mr. Eisenhut?
Hi.
Ms. McKnight?
Hi.
And Mr. Albert?
Hi.
And I'm also an I. Okay. So there you go, Jeff. All right.
I have a question.
Please.
Well, uh, I want to thank Jean. I think those were, uh, those changes made sense and, uh, and they're important for clarity. And just, and procedurally, of course. My question is though, in terms of how this is going to work in terms of, so the changes will be made to the, uh, decision and change to the, um, the diagram. But, you know, in terms of, um, since it's been approved, has the, the, uh, application has been approved? Then will there be signatures now or?
Yes, Jeff, we can take that offline and, um, the planning board will be signing this decision. We can work out the logistics of how we actually get this thing through you and get it recorded.
Okay. I just want to thank the planning board, you know, and, um, it was important for the town and I, health department was on board and important changes were made. So I do appreciate the, the planning board's consideration and, um, obviously, you know, they had reviewed the documents, so they were familiar with what was in them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And as far as that plan modification, I think all it's going to need, you work it out with Lee, but all it's going to need is adding some language to that note.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, is it appropriate at this time to make a motion to accept the draft decision?
I thought that was incorporated in your motion, but that's, that's just for clarity, why not? Go ahead.
Sure. So, so I move that, um, uh, we approve the, uh, draft decision with the amendments, uh, as presented by Ms. McKnight, uh, and subject to the change to the schematic as, uh, we discussed this evening.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All right. All in favor, Mr. Owens?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Eisenhut?
Hi.
Ms. McKnight?
Hi.
And Mr. Albert?
Hi.
And I'm an I. All right. That matter is concluded. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to move to the second item on our agenda, which is seeking a de minimis change. We have the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, uh, regarding property at 148 Chestnut Street. As for this item, let's see. We have a number of, uh, documents that have been submitted to us. I'm going to briefly run through them and ask Lee, if I forget anything, please help me out. All right. First thing was, uh, an application, laying out the relief that's being sought dated May 4th of this year. We have a letter to the planning board members from Attorney Elizabeth Gerlach, Senior Counsel and Director of Real Estate Development and Land Use Planning at the BI Leahy Health, also dated May 4th of this year. We have a plan entitled as built plan via Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Needham, Inc., prepared by Feldman Land Surveyors, uh, dated September 6th, 2006, and revised, uh, a couple of times last on July 11th, 2014. Uh, we have a plan entitled, a plot plan, Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital Needham, again, prepared by Feldman Land Surveyors, dated December 21st, 2018. Memorandum directed to Jerome Andaya from Aaron Farbo Kavanaugh Tochi, dated February 15th, 2019, received February 25th, 2019, regarding environmental sound study. Now we have an interdepartmental communications to, to the board from Dennis Condon, our Chief of the Fire Department, dated May 5th. We have, uh, an inter, interdipental, interdepartmental communication to us from Tom Rider, Assistant Town Engineer, dated May, I'm not sure the date on that, 2020. We have another communication to the board from Lieutenant Kramer of the Police Department. Again, I'm not sure on the date on that one. And another further communication to the board from Tara Gurge of the, uh, who's the Assistant Public Health Director dated May 15th, 2020. Lee, what did I forget?
Um, I, I don't know that you mentioned, we have also had a letter from, it was a letter actually directed to the Board of Health from Nancy Hoffman. Um, she was the Chief Financial Officer from Beth Israel Deaconess dated May 19th, 2020. And just a point of clarification, we did not receive any comments from the town engineer nor from, um, the police department on this project.
Okay. Should, we also have a draft decision in front of us. Should that communication from Ms. Hoffman be included among those?
It's in the draft as an exhibit now.
It is. Okay.
And revised.
Okay. I don't see it. Maybe I've looked.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the revision that went out today. I added it in. It's, it's exhibit six.
Okay. 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 Is that everything?
That's it.
Okay. So I'd like to turn to the hospital now and, uh, I'm asking, uh, who, who would like to make the presentation initially? Is it Mr. Fogarty?
Yes, I'll make the presentation.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board. It's been a little while since I've, uh, presented in front of the group and, um, it's good to see everybody again. And we're, um, excited to present this relatively minor change to the board's consideration. I'm joined by Betsy Gerlach, who as you know is our counsel, Nancy Hoffman, our CFO, Mike Kelly, who oversees our facility department, and Devin Cincella, who will help me run through this PowerPoint, uh, so we, uh, we don't get stuck. So I'll provide, uh, a general overview of what we're doing, why, and what our ask is of the board. So this is a minor modification, uh, to a previous decision by the planning board and, uh, an extension of time, um, all of which relates directly to the COVID crisis and the impact it's had on the hospital. So Devin, if you could just advance to the next slide. This is a, basically a two-part ask. We are asking, uh, as you know, that this, um, body approved, um, the, uh, a temporary vestibule to support a temporary pharmacy, uh, for our cancer center, um, in March of 2019. A lot has happened since then. I think everybody knows that it's been a tumultuous time for the country and for hospitals across the, well, throughout the world, and that certainly has affected us here in Needham. So we're asking for a two-part approval. One, which would allow the installation of a temporary refrigerated unit, or an alternate temporary unit if needed, uh, adjacent to the temporary vestibule that we constructed for the pharmacy, uh, to be used for COVID-related hospital uses. And secondly, um, to extend the deadline that was originally granted for removal of the temporary improvements. Let me just say that, uh, two factors behind this. First of all, the refrigerated unit, um, uh, is there and, um, in existence right now. We had to put that in under an emergency basis, frankly, as an expansion of our war during the height of the crisis so that we didn't, um, run out of capacity, um, during the worst time of the pandemic. Secondly, um, I think everyone has made aware in the public, um, venue and in the news that, uh, this pandemic is not yet settled down. We are absolutely on the downside of the slope right now, um, at the hospital and in the Commonwealth. But there are spikes and that there is significant speculation and belief that there could be a significant spike in the fall. So the second part of this ask, uh, is to extend the deadline for removal of these temporary, um, improvements until November 5th, 2020, or 60 days after the governor, um, ends the state of emergency, whichever is later. Devin, if you could go to the next slide. So, uh, a little bit of, um, history behind the request. These are just some pictures, um, about, um, covering what it looks like in the hospital now. Uh, I've been in this, uh, business for 30 years. Uh, I've been the president of BID Needham for almost a decade. Uh, I've never seen anything like what I've seen in the last two months in terms of, uh, patient acuity. I, um, uh, change in the way we've had to, um, uh, practice what we do. And frankly, fatalities, uh, is, um, it's a very difficult time for everyone. I think, um, relative to why the refrigerated, why we are asking, uh, for a refrigerated unit that is already, uh, on site, um, I think the board would just need to appreciate that, um, the speed with which this pandemic came in, uh, was, um, incredible. So we went from normal hospital operations, uh, to 60 to 80% of our inpatient population, being positive with the, uh, coronavirus in really just a matter of weeks. That resulted, while we were not hit as hard as some of the, uh, large Boston hospitals and what you've heard about in New York, um, there were quite a few deaths in a concentrated period of time. That stressed our more facilities, um, and we knew we needed to do something on an emergent basis. The third thing that really happened in the height of the pandemic is a surge for resources by all hospitals in the state and throughout the country for personal protective equipment, ventilators, and frankly refrigerated, uh, units as morgues reached their capacity. So we were in a situation frankly where, um, we felt that we could not wait to, uh, obtain this unit and put it in play, not just because of the urgency of the, um, crisis, but the fact that, um, these units, we were in competition with hospitals, uh, throughout the state. And had we waited another couple of weeks or a month, uh, we may not have been able to access them. Devin? So, um, as you know, there was an amendment, uh, granted earlier allowing the temporary pharmacy related, related to our cancer center. Your previous decision allowed the hospital to, um, remove the, require the hospital to remove the temporary improvements, um, uh, one year after the building permit, unless the planning board at the request of the hospital determines the delay beyond one year, uh, was for good cause. And we're here today, uh, because given the fact that, uh, there's been a pandemic since that time, that extending, uh, later until the fall is, uh, for good cause, since we don't want to be in a situation where there's a second spike and, um, we don't have a place to, um, place the deceased patients. Next slide, please. So at the present time, what's the present state? The temporary pharmacy has been removed. We finished the, uh, project related to that. Uh, the vestibule that connected it to the hospital remains and the temporary refrigerated unit is on site adjacent, uh, to the vestibule. I won't, uh, repeat what I've just said about the nature of the crisis and the fact that it's fast-moving, hard to predict, and really created an emergency, um, situation that required the hospital to act. Devin? Why did we put the refrigerated unit there? Uh, I think we pointed this out in the materials, but several reasons. It's accessible to the necessary electrical, um, connections. It's, uh, essentially concealed from street view. This is on the backside of the hospital that, uh, faces Lincoln Street. All access to this unit obviously is through the hospital. There's no foot traffic to the refrigeration unit from the street or from the outside. There has been additional screening put up with a temporary fabric mesh fence. And again, our proposed improvements, uh, are to just restore the white clapboard, uh, that needs, um, that is in place now, and then just to install matching siding on the front face. This is what the vestibule looks like now, uh, with the refrigerated unit off to the left there as you stand opposite, uh, the back side of the hospital, uh, looking across Lincoln Street. Devin, please. These are the dimensions. I won't go, uh, into them in detail. Uh, I do just want to call the board's attention to the aspects, uh, that start on this slide and flow into the next slide about, um, our security for the unit, uh, temperature monitoring, venting and condensate, backup power and, um, sound level. This, these were, uh, questions that I believe were raised by the Needham DPH, uh, in terms of how we were addressing those, um, as indicated by, uh, Ms. Newman. The, um, the hospital did respond to those concerns and the DPH responded, I believe, today that they felt that our provisions for, uh, security, temperature monitoring, management of venting, backup power and sound level, uh, were satisfactory to them, but happy to answer the questions, um, when we're finished. Devin, if you could proceed. I think I've addressed this slide. Good news is, if there is any good news in this pandemic, is that we have not actually had to use the refrigerated unit. Very, very close a couple of times, but we have not had to use it. So but because the the pandemic is so unpredictable, we feel that it's very important insurance that we we continue to have the unit onsite and we have the extension of time. Now, I will say to the board in full disclosure, it is possible that if the pandemic continues to subside in the coming days and weeks, we may opt to remove the refrigeration unit from the site once things get under control. So that that would seem appropriate for us to do. However, because this virus can boomerang back in a matter of weeks, we're here, we're here tonight to ask for the provision that we're allowed to bring a temporary unit back if needed. So again, we're asking for an extension until the fall or until the governor's state of emergency, 60 days after the governor's state of emergency is over. Really just because we feel like we need to know, are we in better standing with the virus as we get to the fall? Again, I think I've addressed this earlier in my comments. We just need a reasonable amount of time to assess the, whether the virus is going to come back and that we have an adequate amount of time for the restoration in the area. Next slide. So this is the ask, a minor modification to allow us to install a temporary refrigerated unit, which, as I said before, is already there. And it's adjacent to the current vestibule. And you may need that temporary, a temporary unit in that space for other purposes from time to time strictly related to COVID issues. But again, it's a temporary extension and a temporary situation until we get, at least through what we think is this wave of the pandemic. So time extension again, November 15th or 60 days past the end of the state of emergency. Next slide. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we turn to the board for questions, John, did you have anyone else from your group who would like to present anything?
I don't believe so. Betsy Gerlach might jump in if there are, you know, technical questions on the documents. The others are just here to help me answer any detailed questions I might not be able to answer.
All right, fair enough. Thank you. All right, I'm going to turn to the board now for questions, comments, et cetera. Let me start with Mr. Eisenhardt.
Thank you. This may be my omission or fault, but I was a little bit unclear on the noise. Did the refrigerated unit come with technical specs? Was there any type of study or analysis of the effect it would have on the neighbors across the street? Could you be a little more technical or specific about the noise?
I can answer that generally. I know that the refrigerated unit, you know, met all manufacturing specifications. We have had no complaints, to my knowledge, of noise specific to this unit. And, you know, keep in mind, the unit has been there functioning for a period of weeks. So I know it met manufacturer specifications. And I, to my knowledge, we have not had any neighbor complaints or any complaints specific to noise generated by the unit.
All right. Mr. Owens?
I have no questions.
Thank you. Ms. McKnight? I think you're muted, Gina.
Yeah. I had to rather hurriedly review the final draft of decision here. And I see, of course, that the two, two conditions that had been proposed, one was a a sound study requirement, and that was in a prior draft, and that's been deleted. And the updated environmental sound study, well, in two places, the requirement for a sound study was, was deleted. And I take it that, just to clarify, that that's that change was made because of the communication between the Board of Health and and Nancy Hoffman with regard to the, the operation of the facility. And that, Lee, you're, you're satisfied and you believe the Board of Health is satisfied to have those, that condition deleted.
I believe that the Board of Health is satisfied to have that condition deleted. It's been the, you know, historical practice of the planning board to actually get the sound study documented. But in this particular instance, I think the Board of Health is satisfied. And that in the event that there's a problem or issue that result, that presents itself later, it would have to be resolved.
Okay, and I have a sort of a wording question or comment with regard to section 1.7. I mean, excuse me, where's the numbering here? Yeah, 1.7. The second paragraph of 1.7. Later in the paragraph, the canopy is referred to as the pre-existing canopy, which is the correct wording to use. In the second line of that second paragraph, though, it says, "location of the existing canopy at the former emergency department entrance." I think, you know, we all know that canopy is gone, and that second line should say, "location of the pre-existing canopy formerly located at the former emergency department entrance." But there in the fourth line, it's, would speak of the distance as being, "were approximately." The pre-existing canopy and related support structures were approximately 9.1 feet from Lincoln Street property rather than are. And then I think that was all I had on the wording of the decision. But I do have a question, remembering that the hospital had appeared before the planning board seeking to have the temporary, what is it referred to, the temporary entrance? Or there's a word that's used in the decision to describe it, be made permanent. And I see that this decision and the, and the application seemingly is not to make that existing entrance structure permanent. That would be later, coming before us. Right now, it's still considered a temporary structure, and I do understand that the blue covering that's on it now would be replaced with decent-looking white covering. If anybody would comment to make sure that my understanding is correct.
That's correct, Ms. McKnight. We, we had originally contemplated that we may use that site longer term for mobile technologies such as mobile CT, mobile diagnostic equipment. But frankly, the enormity of the pandemic sort of pushed that entire idea aside. So these are two totally separate concepts. So if we do determine at some point in the future to make that more of a prominent setup, we would be back in front of, in front of the planning board with this separate request.
Good, because although I know we'll be voting later on whether this can be considered a de minimis change, but I would not have voted that as a de minimis change, not requiring a hearing. So I'm glad we've put that off. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Albert?
Yes, thank you. I have no questions. I, I just want to quickly comment that initially I, I did have two concerns, which I think have been addressed to my satisfaction. One, one was the question of the noise study, and I am, I am satisfied with the wording of what I believe is going to be paragraph 3.4 that states the following requirements of the Board of Health shall be met. And number four under that is the refrigerated unit noise produced shall be minimal and shall not cause a public health nuisance concern to abutting neighbors. I think, I think that covers it. So that if it's, if, if we do get a complaint by, by neighbors, we, we are covered by that provision. And, and the second one was the removal of language about the unit being properly vented to provide for proper condensation damage. But I'm satisfied with the language that provides that the unit shall be monitored daily to ensure the correct cold-holding temperature ranges. I think, I think that also that also covers what, what the venting was, was meant to provide. So that's all that I have to add, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have no further questions or issues. Mr. Fogarty and also Ms. Gerlach, I should have asked earlier, I suppose, have you both had an opportunity to review the draft, the latest draft? And are you satisfied with it?
Yes, with the, with the cumulative red line draft that Ms. Newman provided to you this evening, yes.
And with, and with Ms. McKnight's edits that she mentioned?
Yes, Ms. McKnight's edits are fine.
Okay, all right. Anything further from board members? Mr. Block? I think you're muted, Adam.
I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I saw a reference made to an alternative temporary unit. And I was curious, is that an alternative refrigerated unit? Or is that a unit that could potentially be used that would not be a refrigerated unit? And if it's not a refrigerated unit, what type of purpose that other temporary unit might serve?
Thank you. It's a good question. It could be another temporary refrigerated unit. Obviously, there would not be two out there at the same time. It could be another temporary refrigerated unit. It could be a, a different type of temporary unit that limited specifically to our need to respond under a pandemic condition for that space. So it could, for instance, be a unit in which we might store personal protective equipment so that we can have adequate supply on staff for our hospital. It could potentially be, you know, a piece of diagnostic equipment that we would temporarily have to put there if our facilities were completely overwhelmed if the pandemic surged. But whatever it is, it would be temporary and it would be solely focused at helping us respond to a crisis.
Mr. Chair, may I respond to Mr. Black's question and comment?
Let me just see, Mr. Black, did you have anything further on that? Adam? I think you're muted again.
No, I, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Ms. McKnight.
Yes, I had a similar concern about what will this be used for? And what I was particularly afraid of was some kind of drive-up testing. But when I saw the condition that all access to, whether it's the refrigerated vehicle or the alternative, would be through the hospital exit, I was satisfied because my only concern had been disruption of the neighborhood with, with traffic.
Okay. Mr. Eisenhardt?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm still not, I'm still concerned about the noise. I hate to harp on this, but the issue isn't whether or not the noise raises to a level of a health concern. The issue is whether the noise would interfere with the residents' quiet enjoyment. And I'm just not sure the language in the decision is, I mean, I'd be more comfortable if there was something that said, you know, we reserve the right to conduct a formal noise study or whatever you call it, if that's, if it's deemed, if there's a product complaint or an inquiry or something like that. We just, I think we're in the blind on that. Other than we haven't received any complaints, and maybe, I don't know if there are any neighbors out there who could shed some light on that, but maybe some neighbors will say, well, no, it's not an issue.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
But if I may, I, I think that what our intention would be is that if, if noise were to become an issue, we would certainly address it. Part of addressing it would be to determine whether, in fact, the noise was compliant with noise standards, and if they weren't, to, you know, to address it. The situation with the study is that obviously the unit is there now. It's equipped with refrigeration equipment that's there now. And we, we think that it, that it makes more sense to, to address the issue, to be committed to address the issue rather than to study the issue, given the fact that we had very limited alternatives and we're not in a position to, to make a study before this unit was secured and placed, or else we wouldn't have had it at all.
My issue is going forward, yeah.
All right, let's we could just sort of hold on that issue for the moment. Let's see what we hear from the public, if anything. Ms. McKnight?
I just wanted to comment that at the very end of condition 3.4 is, as, as I'm sure Mr. Eisenhardt recognizes, but I want to lead to another part of the decision. The refrigerated unit slash generator noise produced shall be minimal and shall not cause a public health nuisance concern to abutting neighbors. Okay, so that's a condition. But then the limitations on section 4.2, "the board hereby retains jurisdiction to modify and amend the conditions or otherwise modify, amend, or supplement this decision and to take other action necessary to determine and ensure compliance with the decision." Now, I know that's general language, but it seems that it would apply if, in fact, there was more than minimal noise, and there was noise that caused a public health nuisance concern to abutting neighbors. Maybe, maybe our planning director could comment on whether she thinks that limitation and the authority given under it and given on this, the, the section that's recited, would give us that authority if there were a problem in the future.
That language appears in virtually all our decisions, does it not?
Yes.
Well, I think it appears, it appears in all your decisions. Of course, it's not as explicit as a, as a specific condition which, which Bruce is calling for. I, I leave it to you policymakers to decide how specific you want to be and whether you're satisfied with the generalized language.
Let's, let's come back to it if necessary after we open this up to public comment, all right? Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn to the public and seek comment, if any wish, anyone wishes to make that comment. On my list that I see here, I see a list of 21 attendees. This would be the moment, including one phone call-in listener. This would be the moment, if you have a desire to be recognized, to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand, technically, according to the Zoom format. And I'll give it 10 seconds or so to see if anybody is raising hands.
And I think that the the phone call-in person is the same.
the phone call in person is the same person as before, but I'll just mention it again, that it is *9 if that person, anyone calling in by phone, would like to ask a question.
Thank you. All right, well, I'm not seeing anyone raising a hand. Are you, Alex?
No, I'm not. And Clay double checked, and he's not. Someone was raising a hand earlier, but I'm assuming that was accidental since their hand is now down.
Okay.
So I think we're good.
All right. So brings us back to the board. So are we prepared to close the meeting? Do we have a motion to that effect?
Mr. Chairman, again, this is a request to just be treated as a minor modification. And so I don't think a motion to close is necessary, but I will make the motion that we accept the application as a minor modification.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All right, all those in favor, and I will call the roll. Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhardt?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
And Mr. Albert?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Do we have a further motion?
I move that we accept the requested relief. And I will combine that with the motion that we accept and approve the amendment to decision which was presented to us by the planning director this afternoon as the decision approving the requested relief.
With the minor edits that Ms. McKnight made?
Yes, with the minor edits that Ms. McKnight made.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, again, I'll call the roll. Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhardt?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. That's again unanimous. Okay, is there anything further on this matter? I think we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Fogarty, Ms. Gerlach, and your whole team. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all of you. Thank you, Ms. Newman and Ms. Clay. You've been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So Clay and Alex, I guess you're gonna rejigger our panelists and attendees here?
That's right. And since there are so many, I would recommend just giving us a couple extra seconds.
Okay. Just tell me when you're ready, Alex.
Okay, I think you've got everybody.
Thank you, Alex. All right, the next item on our agenda is number three. It is a presentation, not a public hearing, but a presentation by the owners of 100 West Street seeking a proposed new use, seeking a zoning change or a series of zoning changes to enable an 83-unit assisted living and Alzheimer's memory care facility and 71 independent living apartments. The proponents of this are asking the planning board to hear their presentation and in hopes that we will adopt this and become the sponsor at town meeting. There is a large number of people here for the applicant's team here. And do I assume that Attorney Kramer is going to be making the initial presentation? Or is it going to be Attorney Huber?
Okay, please, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I represent LCB Senior Living. It's a Norwood group in connection with the proposed redevelopment of 100 West Street at the corner of West Street and Highland Avenue. I'm sure everyone on the board is familiar with the building. It's been occupied for many years by Avery Crossing, which is a 60-unit assisted living facility. Did everybody hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So I'm going to ask, if you're not speaking, I would ask you to mute. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, it was occupied by a 60-unit assisted living all memory facility and 142-bed skilled nursing facility, as well as medical offices of about 8,300 square feet. Your board approved the project in 1993. And the property consists of approximately 4.3 acres. Most of the property is located in the Avery Square Business District. A small portion of the southern part of the property is located in the Single Residence B District. But none of the building is in the Single Residence B District. A portion of the south parking lot goes over into the Single Residence B District, as well as their landscaping and a lawn. And the property is currently vacant. What LCB Senior Living proposes to do is to construct an 83-unit assisted living and Alzheimer's memory care facility and 71 independent living apartments. The existing three-story building will remain, and the footprint of the building will remain unchanged. We're requesting that a partial fourth story of the building be added to be able to create 10 proposed independent living apartments on that fourth floor. When I say it's partial, the fourth floor would not have the same footprint as levels one, two, and three. There would be setbacks, which are mentioned in the warrant article, on the east side, south side, and north side so that the visibility of the fourth unit of the fourth floor is minimized. What I'd like to do is to go have very brief presentations by our different development team members so you can really visualize what we're proposing and then address the proposed warrant article. I think if you see what we're proposing, it would just help the discussion about the particular warrant articles. And again, this would involve a zoning change. And if the zoning change is successful, we would need to come back to the planning board for further site plan review, as well as some special permits. There are some parking waivers that will still need to be requested in connection with the indoor parking and a few other minor issues. So I'd like to just introduce the group. My law partner, Evans Huber, is here tonight. Lee Bloom and Ted Doyle are here representing LCB Senior Living. David Kelly from Kelly Engineering Group, who I know you all are familiar with, is our project engineer. Anthony Viverito of the Architectural Team, or TAT, is our project architect. Aaron Fredette from McMahon Associates is our traffic consultant. And Marc Fugier of Fugier Planning and Development prepared a fiscal impact report in connection with this matter, which I'm sure you will want and need when you make decisions as to whether you're going to sponsor this. And we'll also be having meetings with the Finance Committee. Also here is Louise Genakis, who's an attorney at Gulston Stores. And Louise represents the current owner, Will Tower. So what I'd like to do is to move to Lee Bloom and Ted Doyle, who represent LCB, and they will give a brief summary of what they have to say.
Please, go ahead. You're muted now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're pleased to be before you tonight. LCB is a company that has roots in senior housing going back about 25 years. We're based in Norwood. At one point, we actually had offices in Wells Park, not too far from the site. This iteration of the company was established in 2011. And since that time, we have built or acquired 28 properties throughout New England and the Northeast. We specialize in high-end, higher-end senior housing, independent assisted memory care living. We currently assist about 2,000 residents throughout our properties and have approximately 1,800 associates or employees of the company. Our typical resident is an 85-year-old senior. They are provided with essentially a private apartment with a kitchenette, full bath, living room, bedroom, depending on the size of the apartment that they choose. And in addition to that, they can avail themselves of a wealth of different amenities throughout the community. In this particular proposal, we're talking about amenities that include a swimming pool indoors, a media room or theater, library, a roof deck, covered parking, an exercise gym, a small gym for the residents to use. We're going to include bocce court and a wealth of other things. People in our buildings receive three meals a day in a restaurant that is private and internal to the community. And they also receive, assisted living residents receive assistance with the activities of daily living, which is the term of art for our industry. What that means is non-medical care that includes things like assistance bathing or dressing, an escort to a meal, medication reminders, and things of that nature, all non-medical. That's how our licensure works through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as an assisted living provider. We are a for-profit business that pays real estate taxes. We have very low impact on municipal services, as you can imagine, given our use. We have a positive impact in the local economy in terms of our residents and associates and people who are coming to visit, taking advantage of things like Starbucks and Cafe Fresh Bagel and the other establishments around there, actually like Johnny's a lot, he's great sandwiches. But those businesses definitely have a positive impact from our presence in the communities that we serve. In addition to that, we're a very good neighbor. We operate as a company with the desire to be quiet, not bright, not noisy, unobtrusive, and a kind neighbor. Even if we weren't driven by that, honestly, our business demands us to be all of those things because the first people to complain if we are obnoxious in any way are residents in the building. So we are an ideal neighbor in many ways. We obviously are here to provide housing infrastructure for local seniors. Our catchment area for a project like this is typically between three and five miles. That's not to say no one ever comes in from further away than that. But from three to five miles is the area in which either our future resident or their children, or one of their children lives. So it is infrastructure that will be utilized by local seniors. And we try to build an active and outward-facing community. We don't want to be that building that no one ever sees anybody coming in and out of. We invite local high schools in to do acts from their new musical. We invite local politicians and regional politicians to hold district meetings in our buildings. We have religious services that happen inside of our buildings and all kinds of things that integrate our residents with the greater community and provide infrastructure that the greater community can take advantage of in terms of meeting space and creating those intergenerational and generational experiences that are so valuable, I think, to everybody. I mean, our number one mission in serving seniors is relieving the isolation that many seniors face when they live at home alone. We obviously provide other things as well, but that's really a key that we provide. And so that's part of our everyday life in the community, providing those interactive opportunities for them to really live life. You want to jump in?
Sure. Hi, it's Lee Bloom with LCB. Again, I apologize if there's a little bit of repetitiveness. I know Roy touched on this a little bit. But the intent is to maintain the existing footprint of the building. The interior will be demolished, and we're proposing modifications of the exterior, which includes adding 10 units to the roof, but also going through the building and opening up some of the ground floor windows that were previously closed and creating a streetscape on Highland. And up on the fourth floor, as Roy had stated, you know, you'll see as the architect brings you through the plans that the intent right now is to only cover about 33% of the roof. And that's part of the zoning that we're requesting, as well as some, in addition to the apartment, some common space for the assisted living residents. The program, as Roy had stated, is 71 units of independent senior housing, 55 units of assisted living, and 28 units of memory care. At this point, unless there are questions, I'd like to turn it over to our architect to walk through plans, elevations, and give you a little better idea visually of what's going on here, what we're proposing.
Why don't you just keep going? Go ahead.
Thank you. I think you just have to switch over to Anthony Viverito now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Anthony Viverito. I'm the architectural representative for the Architectural Team in Chelsea, Massachusetts. I've been working with the applicant, LCB Senior Living, for about nine years now throughout New England and the mid-Atlantic with various ground-up assisted living facilities. During this time period, we've completed about 14 projects together. And the Carter Mill project would be our first renovation in addition to an existing building. My firm's experience in assisted living dates back to the 90s, when assisted living was just being developed in New England. And in my 17 years with the Architectural Team, we've completed over 25 assisted living buildings, including converting several existing nursing homes and community hospitals into assisted living. We also have a long history with converting other types of buildings from mills to schools to courthouses and even churches even into some kind of residential use. As we began the process, the design process with the client for this project, we came to understand the history of the mill and the importance of the Carter family and Needham's history. The building today has been modified over years as portions of the original mill, as we know, were torn down and renovated. The most significant changes to the building occurred in the mid-'90s when the building was completely renovated to have the skilled nursing, assisted living, and the small office medical office space. These renovations included new floors, new roofs, new mechanical and fire protection systems, and a complete reimagining of the building facades into a more sort of classically ornate building other than, which was a counterpoint to the original utilitarian mill building that was built in the 1800s. The architectural additions were intended to look like stone elements, a lot of these on the facade. And you would typically see these elements on a classical-style building. So there are all the trappings there. So there are all the trappings there of a classical building, including cornices, impediments, and tabletures, and pilasters, balustrades, and a rusticated base, and even six-over-six aluminum windows. The view of the building today is interesting. I think it's largely obscured by the overgrown landscaping. And those unfamiliar with the building, it's difficult, I think, to understand where the entry is to the building. It's actually in the back, opposite of Highland Ave. And it's, the formal entrance is off of Highland and West Street. The photos that are up on this slide here are from a parade that was going through town on Highland Ave at the south end of the building. And you can see that the ornament on the building was very minimal, largely a flat brick facade, very simple cornice. There's a large tree there obscuring the corner, which you'll see today. But we feel that since the closing of the building in 2017, the building's curb appeal is really hard to read. As a team, we see an opportunity with this project to reengage the physical building and its residents to the downtown streetscape and the community at large once more. In general, assisted living buildings today, as Ted was talking about earlier, seek to be an integral part of the community from which they draw the residents. The significant history of this mill makes this building something of a landmark for the community. And because of its physical prominence in the downtown area, we have to, we've been cautious, conscious and cautious to be sensitive to the new elements of our design, which we feel will enhance the existing structure. I'll take you through a series of slides here, which walk through these new elements. Here are some of the metrics, which we've gone through prior, 154 total units. And the breakdown of the different populations in the building are on this slide. The parking details, I think David Kelly and his team can go through whatever modifications we've made, but these are the parking metrics for the proposed development. And the first slide here is an aerial perspective from the southeast corner of Highland Ave. And what you see here is this penthouse structure. And in the building, just toward the top of the page is an AL common area building. We've designed the penthouse and the AL building to be closest to the west side of the building, furthest from Highland Ave and the sightlines that you have from Highland Ave and the directed butters and the surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide, please. This series of slides will start with the existing. Here's the existing today and then the proposed. And so in the top corner of this slide, you can see a little bit of that penthouse structure. Working our way down Highland Ave, here we're at the corner of West and Highland. At the north side of the building today and proposed. Working our way next to the station, the train station today and proposed. The existing roof, we also want to sort of set the context, help you understand what is on the building today. And there's an awful lot of rooftop equipment between elevator head houses to stair towers to some large chillers. Then they're pretty well scattered across the entire footprint of the roof. Our proposal at this point, this is a view perspective of the penthouse. And we've designed the outdoor spaces for the residents, the independent residents, to have these internal courtyards. And those are part of the building volume, if you will. They're within the footprint of the penthouse. And we have a variety of sort of colors and textures that are really in the early stages of development here, where we would introduce some color, different colors, to accent different elements of the massing and then have vegetated planters as well in these zones for the residents to partially, you know, give an activity, an outdoor activity for folks and to provide some screening. This next series of slides, again, working our way on Mellon Street. Here's another view of today and the proposed. And we'll keep, we can go through these. Here's a slightly elevated view here on Highland and Morton Street. Today, proposed, yep. This is the south side of the parking lot today and proposed. And this sort of shows, I'll identify it in the floor plans, but at the lower level of the building, we're proposing to have these outdoor patios, where residents will have access to their own dedicated patio. You can see those next to the trees in the building facade. Here's a view from Hillside today and proposed. And this series of slides are the orthogonal technical elevations. We have the existing elevations, which are hard to read at this scale, I think, for everyone. It's a, this is a big building in the black and white. And then in the rendered version, just below that, that is the proposed design. And this covers all of the primary elevations in the facade. And we are keeping a lot of the sort of classical elements that were added to the building in 1994. We are keeping those elements, restoring them in some cases because they're past their useful life. And then the patios and the additional windows for the ground floor units are actually going to go, we're going to put windows back in what were openings originally, and that had been blocked up in '94. So the next slide, please. Let me just, it's difficult to see, but if we can just, I'm sorry, go back one. I wanted to point out one important thing here. So we estimate that the existing rooftop equipment to be roughly 41 foot 9 inches from the grade plane. And we are proposing the penthouse, top of penthouse, to be 44 feet, with the elevator overruns to be 49 feet. So there's a slight increase there with the equipment that we would need for this project. But we thought it was important to at least establish the context for what is there today and what we are, of course, proposing. The next slides are our floor plans. And David and his team can run through the landscaping and sort of general circulation, vehicular circulation to the site. But in this first floor plan of the building, the, as I said prior, the entrance to the building is actually at the north, the proper entrance to the building is on the north side of the building, at the corner of Highland and West Street. And if you take the right side of this plan, if you will, if you were going to draw a line right down the middle, the entrance for memory care and assisted living, where we see the blue, alternating blue color for those boxes, that is the memory care floor. But it's also an entrance for the assisted living folks who will have the second and third floor of the building to occupy, including a structure on the roof. On the left side of the plan, if you will, there is a dedicated entry for the independent living folks. And that's at the turnaround circle. And that entry brings you into the independent side. The blue squares that are alternating along the south side and east side of the building are the independent units, and their dedicated patios are shown here in the plan with planting, new plantings along the buffer between the back of the sidewalk and the building proper. We estimate the existing building square footage to be roughly 189,000 square feet. And the penthouse, that penthouse and AL structure that we're proposing is roughly 16,000 square feet for a total of 205,000 square feet approximately. The second floor, please. Again, the actual building is divided into three components. Here we have, starting left to right on the sheet, the L-shaped part of the plan is the independent living floor. And then there will be where the existing party wall is today. To the right side of that is the assisted living portion. A commercial kitchen is put between these two volumes. And dining rooms for both populations are at this level. Next floor, please. And the third floor, the same setup. The party wall divides the two populations. On the right-hand side of the plan is the assisted living. On the left-hand side, for the L-shaped portion of the building, that is the independent living. And there are all types of program elements that we have in these buildings that are scattered throughout to get the residents moving between floor to floor. The penthouse level here has the 10 independent living units. And it's clear, I think, to understand what the setback, what we've done in terms of setting back this penthouse piece from Highland Ave and from the south side of the building there, to really minimize the sightlines from those, the directed butters, as well as the view from Highland Ave. The building to the right on the page is, or the structure to the right is an assisted living space, program space. And in black and white, you will see that we've also located the mechanical systems on this roof and have put screening around the mechanical systems. We've chosen a very sort of light footprint, if you will, system for all of the units. We're using what's called a VRF system, which is a type of heat pump that will provide heating and cooling for the building, for the entirety of the building. And we have a series of condensers, which are those smaller boxes. You can see those at the sort of west side, west end of the penthouse. And then along the, again, on the west side and in the center core, we have another cluster of these condensers and then some additional ones next to the AL piece. And there are three energy recovery ventilators that are also in those enclosures and screened from view. We're really excited about getting to work with the town on this project. And we're very, very happy to be, to get your feedback and keep moving forward with this.
Great, thank you. Who's next?
David Kelly would walk through the site plan quickly with us. David, are you still with us? Let me try and get him.
Maybe he's muted.
Yeah, let me try and get him. I apologize.
I show him as being muted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just sent him a quick text to try and get him to unmute. I don't think he's on video. I think he's the caller.
Well, maybe we can go to the...
He says he's, he said he's muted, and I don't know that...
He needs to unmute.
Yeah, I know. Like, it's almost like he thinks we're muting him.
Clay or Alex, can we do something to help here?
I just tried to manually unmute him.
And it didn't work? Okay, we will, okay. You can get him on, okay. We're going to give him a quick call. Just a quick anecdote, before we started this hearing, David told me how many times he's been through this. I was getting advice, this is my first Zoom public hearing.
Oh, is it?
Yes, and I find it quite accommodating, given the circumstances. Ted's got him on the phone right now, so he'll talk him through unmuting.
Looks like he's unmuted now.
Looks like he's unmuted, Ted. He should be unmuted now, it's what...
David, can you hear us?
Can you see the screen? Did you guys hear him?
Not well.
Speak, David.
Can you hear me now?
That's better. Can everyone hear him? Bruce, can you hear him?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I can hear you clearly right now.
Okay, great. I don't know what happened there. I apologize. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Kelly, Kelly Engineering Group, for the record. And as to echo Anthony's comments, I'm really, really pleased to be on the team as well. I think it's a super project and I'm very proud to be a part of it. So what I'd like to do is take you outside the building. The slides are a little small, but I'm going to take you through it. You don't really have to be able to read them to understand what I'm going to tell you. I'm going to spend a few minutes on the outside of the building, on the existing conditions, and a few minutes on the proposed conditions. Hopefully, it'll provide you with an overview of what's happening here. So this slide represents the existing conditions on the property. In green is the boundary of the property. It's approximately 4.3 acres. At the bottom of the screen, at the bottom of the building, is Highland Avenue. On the right side, north side is West Street. And on, excuse me, on the north side is West Street. And on the west side or the above part of the plan is the railroad, as you're familiar with. It's difficult to see on this plan, but I'll show you a little clearer on the next plan that, as Roy pointed out, there is a zone line that travels through the site. If you were to look at the southerly parking lot, which is just south of the building, which is highlighted, there's a line about 40 feet to the south, not quite parallel to the building. That's the zone line, and we'll show you on the next sheet a little clearer. The single residence B district is located south of that line. And the Avery Square Business District is on the north side, in which the building is located. For your reference, about 3/4 of an acre of the property is located in the single residence B district, and the remainder is in the Avery Business District. The building footprint that you see highlighted and colored in that sort of salmon color is approximately 64,000 square feet, 63,700 square feet. There are 193 parking spaces located on the property today. There's 110 outside and 83 inside within the first floor of the building, as explained to you by Anthony earlier. There are two driveways into the site. There's a driveway off of West Street, which is located at the northwest corner of this plan, the top right, just outside the green line or that right, top right corner of the lot. There's an access route from just next to the railroad from West Street. And on the southerly side of the building, there's also a two-way access in and out of the site onto Highland. The site, if you were to enter the site today, let's start on the north side, you would continue off of West Street and head south into the site. There's parking located on your left and right as you travel in from West Street. There's a drop-off area that will become the drop-off area, as explained by Anthony earlier, for the AL and the memory care components of the property ultimately. And then as you head into the site further, still parking on the right side, there is an access to the garage that will be closed, that you'll see in the center of the building. If we continue past that, again, parking on the left and right to that roundabout area that was described earlier. It's a gazebo in the middle for those of you who've been out to the property. Then there's a driveway that continues through the building, continuing through the building and into that southerly parking lot. There's a, the, the, the parking on the southerly parking lot extends approximately 99 feet into the residential district, and that's been there for a, a long period of time. There is existing landscape buffers along the railroad that will end up, will, will remain and will enhance, as I'll explain in a moment. Could we just quickly look at the next slide, Lee, please? Thank you. So the main purpose I'm showing you this is, and I'll explain the, the, the proposed layout in the next slide. We'll hopefully leave you to see. But just to the left of the building, there's a line, hard to read on this. And it crosses just to the south of the parking spaces that are nearest the building on the south side or the left side of the plant. That's the zone line that I've been speaking about. This plan has a lot of more detail that describes the efforts that we've put in so far into really analyzing this project from a zoning standpoint with required and existing and proposed and, and a demonstration of compliance, or how we might go about getting that compliance. You'll see clearly on this plan also that there's parking along Highland Avenue available to this site. There's 28 spaces on Highland Avenue. If you can go to the next slide and I'll, I'll run the board through the proposed conditions. Thank you. This is a plan that was rendered by Hawk Design. Hawk Design, a landscape architect that you're familiar with and has been involved with a number of, a number of other successful landscape designs in town. They're, they're a part of the team and we're happy to have them on the team. So what I'd like to do is take you through this portion of the, of the presentation, which is the proposed conditions. Very same orientation as you just saw with Highland Avenue on the bottom, railroad on the, on the top of the site, and on the right side is West Street. The, the, there are, in this case, there's a total of 176 parking spaces. That includes the 28 on Highland Avenue. So the parking spaces that add up to 176, there's 114 spaces outside. There are 34 spaces inside. You'll remember that there was 83 spaces inside today. The reason that's less is to accommodate the units that was described by Anthony a moment ago. So it, it results in 34 spaces inside for a total of 148 spaces on the site. And, and as I noted, the 28 on Highland Avenue would be available to the project as well. The left side or the southerly parking lot remains virtually unchanged from a layout standpoint. When I say virtually unchanged, there's substantial landscape being proposed throughout that along, along with the rest of the site, which I'll explain in a moment. All of the existing landscaping that's on site, the existing buffering will remain, but will be enhanced. So for instance, as you can see from this aerial overlay, there's a very heavy landscape, dense landscaping buffer to the south of the southerly parking lot. There's an existing buffer along the railroad on the west side or the upper side of this plan. And there's even a very heavy buffer between the southerly parking lot and Highland Avenue. What I, what I'd like to do is quickly take you through the circulation, again, in the very same orientation as we just, as we just went through in the existing condition. If you start again on the West Street side, which is, which is the right side, you, you'll, you'll enter the site there and you'll, you'll, you'll have, you'll have parking on the, on the left and right. You'll have a, an enhanced drop-off area that will handle, as, as pointed out by Anthony, the memory care and the, and the assisted living. As you, as you head further into the side, site, again, you'll have the parking areas on the right and left. There is a, a service area that you'll see where, located where the old entry to the garage was and is no longer going to be. If you continue to the south, you'll find that same roundabout. But in the L-shaped of the building, there's a new connection to the garage. It's an, it's an exit only. So exiting traffic would exit that garage. And if they were heading towards West Street, they would take a right. If they were heading southerly, they'd go around the roundabout through the building and then back out onto Highland Avenue. Taking, taking the board through the amenities and, and the landscaping just quickly. Again, heading from the north side or the right side of this plan, you enter the site, on the left side will be the, will be the memory care amenities area. That will consist of outdoor dining, shade structures, seating and activity lawns. That would be a fenced area in order to maintain that, that security and privacy of that memory care component. As you head south further and past the, past the entry that we discussed a moment ago in that drop-off area, you'll, you'll come to a second amenity area, which is primarily intended for memory care and independent living. That has, that will be equipped with an outdoor dining area, shade structures, fire and water features. We expect there'll be a bocce court, which are very popular now, and activity lawns. As you continue a little further than that, again, you'll see the service area we talked about a moment ago. I will note that we've run all of the templates from the fire department on this layout, and they can maneuver through the site. They can travel around that roundabout and back out clearly on, out onto West Street. Also, we've run templates for the service area that, that, that the required trucks can easily back in. The refuse area would be, would be fully screened, and that area will be fully screened from both off-site and from on-site, where, where we're trying to divide it clearly from those amenity areas. Heading further south, again, that same entry into the garage and either circulate within the garage, as described by Anthony, or travel through into that southerly parking area. Just, just quickly, from a grading standpoint, both existing and proposed conditions, West Street is slightly higher than, than the south end of the site, only by about a couple of feet. So there's, it's quite a flat site, those of you who know it. Highland Avenue rises slightly to the north from the south. And so the, the patio areas that are located and were explained by Anthony that are along Highland Avenue, which are designed to really activate that space to Highland Avenue. In, as you head north, are slightly below the elevation of the sidewalk, ranging from almost that grade on the southerly side to about two feet lower on the northerly side. Those little pink areas closest to the Highland Avenue are those, are those patios that we were speaking of. Without getting into any more technical information, this is a, really a developed site. All the utilities are available. We don't see any issues with, with being able to supply utilities to the site. Stormwater management will be upgraded as necessary to conform to the town's new regulations and to state regulations. Again, we don't expect there to be any issues relative to that and getting support of TPW at the appropriate time. Mr. Chairman, that, that concludes my presentation. I believe Aaron with the NASA is going to give you a quick overview of traffic, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Erin Firda. I'm a registered professional engineer with McMahon Associates, the traffic engineers on the project. I'm going to give a very brief overview, but of course, happy to answer any questions as needed. We, on this slide, there are a number of bullets for, for digestion, but we conducted a full traffic impact study for the proposed project, including the signalized intersection of Highland Avenue and West Street, as well as the project site driveways. And next slide, Ted, if you don't mind. And really, we did a full impact study in accordance with MasTOT guidelines, looking at the peak hours of adjacent street traffic today, in the future without the project, as well as in the future with the project. And what that allows us to do is really understand the impacts that the project may have on the study area roadways. We conducted capacity analysis to understand that impact, as well as a parking analysis. And the, the big picture takeaway is that this particular land use of assisted living and this number of independent living is really a relatively low traffic generator. I'll also talk briefly in a minute about its comparative trip generation to the previous land use, which was more intensive. And then I think the, the biggest takeaway is that the, the proposed project, when we add in the, the estimated trips associated with the land use, is that there really is no substantial change to the operations on the adjacent roadways. Next slide, Ted. So one of the elements I wanted to dive into tonight was the trip generation of the project site. So as has already been laid out a couple of different times, the proposed land use of independent living and assisted living is estimated to generate approximately 30, 30 trips during the weekday morning peak hour, and approximately 45 trips during the weekday afternoon peak hours. So if you break that out, it's approximately one trip every one to two minutes during those peak hours, which again, is, is a relatively low traffic generator. When we look at that trip generation in comparison to the previous land use, which included assisted living, skilled nursing facility and medical offices, we see that the proposed project is estimated to generate a significantly lower number of trips, not just during those peak hours, but also over the course of the entire day. And in some instances, it's shown to be less than half of what was estimated to previously be on the site. And so what we would say is that if there are fewer trips, there would be fewer impact C-adjacent roadway network overall. Next slide, Ted. The other element I wanted to talk about quickly tonight was the parking analysis we did. So based on the proposed zoning ratios, in this case, we, for the assisted living, we matched what was already in the books for a skilled nursing facility, which is a half space per bed and one space per two employees for the assisted living, as well as one space per dwelling unit for the independent living. And as was previously mentioned, what's being proposed on site right now is 148 parking spaces. And that, that's the, the supply that is going to be on site. What we then look at is what the proposed demand is going to be. What, what will the proposed land use need in terms, in, in order to serve the, the, the peak demand that we anticipate to see out there? And we do that using industry standards. In this case, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Handbook. And based on the analysis, looking at both assisted living and independent living units, we estimate a peak, a weekday peak period demand of approximately 80 spaces. So the 80 spaces of demand over the 148 spaces that are currently proposed is a utilization rate of about 54%. So as you can see, the, the, the number of spaces that are proposed far exceeds the anticipated demand. And I've done a number of parking studies for LCB at their, at their assisted living facilities. And we also look at some of the supply ratios that IT or the Institute of Transportation Engineers have. And their parking ratios tend to be much lower and resulting in that, that lower demand than what we're showing for the, for the proposed parking spaces. Additionally, we're showing a, a one space per unit for the independent living. Note that elsewhere I need them in the Elder Services Zoning District for independent living, and that requires a half a space per unit. So we're showing more than that, which again, just is indicating that the number of parking spaces proposed on site is, is more than adequate to, to meet our, our demand. And just in general regarding the parking and the trip generation, the way the site is situated, it's, it has additional on-street parking. It's very close to public transit, which again, would limit the number of parking spaces needed, but also the number of cars entering and exiting the site, expecting employees and maybe some visitors to be using that transit. And there's also a number of services nearby that have already been listed out, grocery, pharmacy, banks, senior, senior center, all of which would potentially reduce the number of vehicle trips that need to come in and out of those driveways. So with that, I will turn it back over to Roy.
Excuse me, if I may interrupt for one second, it's Lee. I apologize, but there happens to be a typo on the screen. The previous land use required 193 spaces. I do apologize for that. It wasn't 110, it was 193. And with that, we can now turn it back over to our legal team.
Thank you. We'd like to address the proposed warrant articles, now that you've seen what we're proposing physically. And Evans Huber, my partner, will, will walk you through the two articles. One is to create an overlay district, and the second is the map change. Roy, can I, let me just stop you for a second. Up on the screen now, we're seeing fiscal impact notes. So, do you want to go to him first? Yeah, I, I guess that's my question, in terms of timing. If you want Mark to review the fiscal impact report, he's happy to. I, I just didn't know if you wanted to hear that or if you wanted to go directly to zoning. It's up to you. Mark, Mark is here. I guess, I guess if he's available, let's hear him, but I'd ask him to, you know, give us a synopsis. Okay, Mark?
Yep, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us this evening. Just briefly, I did the fiscal impact report for the project. I met with two key departments that are going to see the most direct impact, police and fire, to, to, to look at the project. We're estimating a project gross revenue of $550,000. That's derived from property, real estate taxes of $470,000, personal property taxes of $49,000, excise taxes $21,000, and CPA revenue of $9,400. We're estimating police and fire impact to be approximately $162,000. As stated, I did meet with both the fire chief and the police chief and went over those estimates. Obviously, this new land use and the significant investment that's going to be made is going to increase the property value from $9.4 million today to over $37 million, which is an over $28 million increase. Obviously, the, the taxes on the property will also increase significantly from presently $175,000 today to $470,000 at project completion. It's going to take approximately 18 months to, to construct the project, and there'll be other offsetting impacts on the economy from the, from the building and other tradesmen's that will be on the site. And also, with a project completion, with the new jobs created, meal stacks and, and other spinoffs from the new population in, in the community, there'll be additional benefits. So overall, it's going to be a significant increase of economic activity on the property from what's there today and a very positive fiscal return for the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, go ahead, Roy. Okay, with respect to zoning, Evans will walk you through the significant points of the, the proposed warrant articles.
Yes, good evening. This is Evans Huber. I'm one of the attorneys representing LCB Senior Living, along with Roy. And we've drafted some proposed warrant articles, too. The first would create the, what we've called the Avery Square Overlay District ASOD. And what we've, we've previously submitted that actual warrant article to you, what we have here is a slide or a couple of slides that highlight the major aspects of the proposed warrant article that will warrant your attention. So height in the Avery, Avery Square Overlay, Overlay District, we are proposing that a maximum allowable height would be 44 feet to the top of the fourth story. And that would also be the height limit for all mechanical systems on the roof, with the exception of the elevator overruns, which would be allowed to go up to 49 feet. The current maximum allowable height in the Avery Square Business District is 35 feet. So this would be an increase of nine feet maximum allowable height. The actual proposed, what's contemplated by this project, the expectation is that that top of the penthouse units will be at about 42 and a half feet. But we are, we've drafted the warrant article to allow maximum of 44 feet, so that there's a little bit of wiggle room in the event that something about the structure needs to be a little bit higher than currently planned. In terms of the number of stories, as has already been mentioned several times, we are proposing that the building include a fourth story. Right now, in the Avery Square Business District, the maximum allowed is two and a half stories, and of which only two may be occupied. But it is important to note that this building is currently a three-story legal pre-existing non-conforming structure. legal pre-existing non-conforming structure, and there is occupancy on all three stories. So this would only be increasing the number of stories by one compared to the current structure, as well as only increasing the number of occupied stories by one. And to limit the impact of the fourth story, the proposed fourth story, we've included some aspects in the warrant article that would restrict the fourth story to something very close to what you were shown on these drawings. So we've included in the warrant article setbacks from West Street Highland Avenue, the southern side of the structure as are set set forth in this slide. The setback from the north side facing West Street would be one hundred and ten feet, which is, and then from setback from the Highland Avenue side would be fifteen feet. In reality, a significant portion of the structure will be set back considerably more than fifteen feet because, as you may recall from one of the slides, the southern portion, which is the independent living, is actually at an angle so that as you get to the southern portion of the building, it's set back considerably more than fifteen feet. But there is a portion of the of this proposed fourth floor that is approximately fifteen feet setback from the Highland Avenue side. We're not proposing any setback from the on the western side of the building. That's the side that overlooks the train tracks and the parking lot. We're also, in addition to the setback, as another mechanism for limiting what can be up, what can be built up on the fourth floor, we're proposing a maximum coverage area of thirty-five percent. I think you may have heard Lee Bloom say earlier in the presentation that what we've drawn and are planning to build would cover about thirty-three percent. That percentage, by the way, includes all the square footage inside the screening that surrounds that is proposed to surround the mechanical systems on the roof. Okay, next slide, please. In order to build what we're proposing, we are going to have to increase the floor area ratio. In the the current maximum FAR in the Avery Square Business District is point seven. We are proposing to accommodate what we are proposing here. We are asking that the FAR in the Avery Square Overlay District be increased to one point one. That would be necessary to allow the additional structures on the ground floor and on the roof. The parking, you just heard, I I will just touch on that briefly. But basically, what what we are proposing for assisted living and memory loss units is the same as for as is currently the requirement for skilled nursing facilities, one space for every two beds plus one space for every two employees on the largest shift. And for the independent living apartments, we are proposing that the requirement be one space per apartment, which is greater than what is currently required in the Elder Services Zoning District. In the allowed uses, we are proposing that independent living apartments and assisted living and Alzheimer's memory loss units be allowed as a matter of right. We recognize that some people might be of the view that this should be allowed by special permit, but we think under the circumstances, it's appropriate to allow these particular uses as a matter of right, largely because the proposed use is very similar to what has already been in this building for almost twenty-five years, up until about three years ago. And there are, as indicated in these other bullet points, there are significant reasons why this these particular uses, which we are asking be allowed as a matter of right in the warrant article, are both appropriate and needed. Independent living apartments are in short supply in Needham. The property is ideally located for this kind of use, close to the senior center and the train stop. There are many other commercial businesses within walking distances of the proposed development, which is another reason why this is an appropriate use of this structure. And the restrictions that we have placed in the proposed warrant article, such as the setback requirements and the limitation to thirty-five percent of the roof, will promote maintaining the character of the neighborhood and the visual impact. And then lastly, in the proposed ASOD bylaw, we are we are proposing that ten percent of the independent living apartments be affordable units, which will increase the affordable unit inventory in town. Next slide. So we have also submitted for your consideration a map change warrant article. This is the only issue with respect to this that you might want to think about is whether the boundaries of the ASOD should be the same as the boundaries of the property or whether it should be limited to the boundaries of the Avery Square Business District. We have written the proposed warrant articles so that the limit of the Avery Square Overlay District matches the limit of the Avery Square Business District, rather than extending into the adjacent single residence district. Thought was that that is more appropriate, but we've also included some restrictions in the proposed warrant article that would prevent the parking area, the southern parking area that does extend into the single residence the district from being expanded in beyond its current state. So that the the intention there is to draft a warrant article or two warrant articles that are drafted as narrowly as possible to allow what we are proposing, but nothing more than that. And would be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Okay. Roy, is that?
That's that's our that's our presentation. We're obviously happy to answer any questions. The consultants could answer anything that you might have or if you have particular comments or questions about the the warrant articles, we'd be happy to talk to talk to you about them and explain our rationale for, you know, any particular paragraph. Our hope is that you will think this is a good project and that the bylaw has been carefully worded and that we'll be able to reach agreement on the warrant so that you could present that at the fall town meeting.
Okay, I'm going to ask now, one at a time, the board members, if they have any questions or comments or thoughts. We start with Bruce Eisenhut.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I admit I didn't go carefully over the details of the language of the warrant articles, but one of my issues, as Roy will tell you, is affordable housing. And I'm glad I was glad to see an affordable component to the overlay district. But you do have to define affordability by citing or referencing a specific program or some sort of regulatory reference. You can't just say affordable units. It has to be referenced in some way because there needs to be a guarantee that the units will have the same amenities and services as the market units and that they will continue in perpetuity. So that's my only comment about that. The other thing, I think it's important in a building like this that basically is going to be a gut rehab to take advantage of some environmental certifications. This is maybe an issue more for a special permit or site plan, but I know some Boston, more and more buildings are going lead silver or gold certified and proudly displaying those plaques they put up in front of their building. So, you know, I'd like to know or have some discussion or idea that maybe what you're going to do in terms of environmental sensitivity. And if you're going to go lead certification, that would be a good thing to include in your presentation. Thank you.
So, Mr. Eisenhut, in our proposed warrant article, we do include a section on affordable housing. It's three point one five point six. And we have drafted that to mimic the affordable housing regulations in other overlay districts in town.
Okay.
And did you have any comment on the lead cert?
Yeah, I mean, I it's Lee Bloom with LCB. I mean, right now, we're very in the very premature stages of design and schematic design. But as we work with you, assuming, you know, we're successful moving forward, when we get into design development, we do typically do design that makes us certifiable, although we usually don't go and get certified. But we do implement and work with our lead consultants to do bring us to a certifiable level. Again, and I do agree when we get, assuming we get the special permit process, that we can get very specific about those. But yeah, we acknowledge that, and that's what we try to achieve.
Well, you may not need a special permit on this. You may just need site plan review, right?
No, I think I think we still need to be back.
Well, anyway, you can do, you can do, I've seen language, lead certification or equivalency, so, yeah.
It is something that we definitely are concerned about.
Yes. Mr. Owens.
I I have no questions. I just have a comment. I think this is a good use at a good location, and I'm interested in the project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alper.
Yes, thank you. First of all, in in describing, I did not look at the map language. I figured that that was something that could wait until later. But but in the in the presentation, Adams just kept referring to the map change being the Avery Square District. And I assume he means the portion of the Avery Square District that encompasses this building and not the entire Avery Square District as being the the overlay district.
That that's correct. We we wanted to draft it narrowly. In our initial meeting with Lee, the building inspector and the chair last fall, we we had a discussion about that. And I think we were all in agreement that the narrower it's drawn, the better. Because if you have an overlay district that includes the property, the Trader Joe property, you just have all kinds of possible unintended consequences and different neighborhoods. So we we kept it. It's really this property, either this property or the portion of this property that is in the Avery Square Business District and nothing else.
I do have some comments, but I only have one more question. So let me let me ask the question first. My recollection is that when this, oh, first of all, I want to say that I'm very much in favor of this project. I think it's a great use of this of 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 this site. And and but when when this was first brought to us informally, I believe that you were talking about bringing this as kind of like a citizens petition, that you would be the petitioner to the town. And now you're switching it to asking the planning board?
No, we we never, this was always, our intention was always to have the planning board bring the article. We never wanted to do a citizens petition.
Okay, then it was my mistake. Okay, so I did have some comments. The hour is getting late. So and 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 this is just a presentation, so I I won't go into all of them. I had some specific comments to to some wording issues in in the in the proposed bylaw, but we can deal with those at a later time. But generally, the two general comments that I want to make is, number one, we have been, in the years that I've been on the planning board, which is the past five years, we've been using twelve and a half percent instead of ten percent for for the affordable housing percentage. And the second comment that I want to make at this time, without getting into specific language in the article, is is that I'm I'm a little concerned about your use and consideration of the parking spaces on Highland Avenue as being parking that is available for this building. My my recollection is that right now, those spaces are special permit spaces that are being used for the employees of the businesses in the area. And special permit spaces in town for for employees of businesses are really at a premium. And I don't really know whether it's fair to include those spaces in the available parking when 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 we get to the parking waivers and consideration of that. I don't know that the town is going to want to remove those spaces from the from from the special permit inventory that they have now.
So Paul, Roy, did you want to speak to that or I can address that?
You you start.
So Paul, the the number of spaces on the site, not including the spaces on Highland Avenue is one hundred and forty-eight. And that would be sufficient to meet the parking requirements of the warrant article as drafted, which is one space for each independent living unit or apartment and one space for every two beds and the assisted living and memory care, plus one space for every two employees on the largest shift. That those numbers add up to one forty-eight, and that's what's on the site without counting any of the twenty-eight that are on Highland Avenue.
Then you wouldn't have a problem.
Yes.
Well, and and the, yeah, we would have a problem. The the other thing, Avery Square District is unique in that in section five point one point one point seven of the bylaw, you are allowed to count as onsite spaces what, you know, the the portion of Highland Avenue that is adjacent to you. So that, and we've seen this in the past in some Avery Square spaces, Avery Square cases where as a week, we're allowed to say that we have one forty-eight onsite and we can count the adjacent twenty-eight spaces as onsite as well, which leaves the one seventy-six. But the way it works now, we don't need those spaces. We don't need those spaces in the sense that we're not, we're not going to have to request a waiver. And even though some of those spaces may be permit parking, you know, a good portion of those has as in a butter, Hundred West Street should be entitled to use a number of those spaces. But it's it's just the bylaw says you can count those as your as your supply. But but we don't need it to qualify.
And these are issues that that we can discuss in more detail at a much later date. These are, we're really getting into the weeds when we talk about it. But I wanted to to raise raise the issue so that you have it as as something to consider for the future.
We appreciate that.
That's it for tonight. We'll talk about the rest at another time.
All right, Ms. McTone. I think you muted, Jean.
Yes, I have questions or comments and was in eight areas, but two of the areas were covered by my colleagues. And those were Mr. Eisenhut's questions about lead certification. And I was going to ask about solar, but of course, that that's encompassed in the whole concept of lead certification. So I'll leave that alone. And also, the affordable units. concept of lead certification. So I'll leave that alone. And also, the affordable units, I also was going to ask about, we're typically have asked for 12 and 1/2%. So, Mr. Alpert asked, asked about that. I, I'm very pleased to see some independent living, some housing options limited to persons over 55. And I think our town does need those options. However, with regard to the fiscal impact, I'm sure that town meeting members and others attending the hearings that preliminary to town meeting will ask this question. There's no impact on the schools? What about those seniors who might sell their house, who will be living in Needham and wanting to move, who might sell their houses to families with children? We have, you know, I don't expect an answer to that issue right now on the way of fiscal impact, but I do think it's something that needs to be considered because that question will be asked. Also, on the fiscal impact study, the statement is made, "Any required off-site traffic and roadway improvements are expected to be addressed during the approval process with the town." However, this is proposed to be an as-of-right use. So, the process for addressing issues like that is the granting, is the process of granting a special permit. I, in general, I would like very much to see this presented as a special permit use rather than an as-of-right use. And I think, you know, traffic impacts are among those that I, I don't see how you address them, especially if it involves contribution to the cost of improvements without a special permit process. And then, when it comes to traffic impact, I was very surprised to see the traffic impact study, which seems quite detailed, not include the intersection of Hillside Avenue and West Street. It's right there. You know, it's certainly going to be impacted by traffic entering and exiting the main entrance of West Street. It is a difficult, dangerous intersection. I have a report, I have a couple of reports where that intersection was singled out by the studies that the, that the select board had done recently of traffic and pedestrian safety in, in Needham. That intersection has to be studied, and it definitely needs improvements. And that goes to the question, to the issue of contribution toward improvements. And there's that, this report, I don't know if you've seen it, that talks about the need for improvements at that intersection.
Let, let me just, just say one thing, and then I'll let, see if Aaron has any comments. But one of the important things in this case is that the traffic impact for the proposed uses is substantially less than the, the former uses. So, we have the, the usual situation is that a development is going to have a greater traffic impact than, than before, you know, like you're putting up TripAdvisor instead of a one-story building. In our case, the, the, the parking and traffic is decreasing. So usually, when the, when there's contributions for traffic fund, it's to mitigate what you're causing so that it doesn't get any worse. And in this case, because of the uses of the bus, the traffic is going to, is going to go down. So since that volume is going to go down, that has got to have some positive impact on that intersection, because some of the vehicles, I'm sure, will be entering, you know, will be going past that, that intersection. Obviously, a lot will go on Highland Avenue. But that, that's why, that's why, since this use is better from a traffic point of view, I, I wouldn't see that that would kick this to the necessity of being a special permit use. I, I think that we think this is a very good use, and we can't think of a good reason why someone would think that the use is bad or questionable. So why give somebody who, you know, may, you know, have a bad motive for opposing something, be given ammunition for a special permit, you know, to, to appeal a special permit as opposed to as-of-right?
I'll, I'll go into another reason why I think it should be by special permit. But I do think, regardless of what you say about the traffic impact being in, in, oh, I guess, in the opinion of the traffic engineer, lesser than the prior use. It may be different from the prior use depending on the intersection. And I do think the level of service, at least, that exists presently, and the safety for individuals who might be living there, you talked about people walking to the senior center, that is a very dangerous intersection and needs to be studied as part of your traffic impact. And I, I want, I just wanted to comment or ask about the independent living units. When I think of the kind of housing that seniors in Needham lead, lead, need, I think of the place where I live, Rosemary Ridge Condominium, 105 units. It doesn't happen to be limited in age, but it's mostly older folks. There's no food service. You, you, you know, it's just, it's an apartment. You cook your own food. It seems that what you're proposing is more like a continuing care retirement community, only it doesn't have the ultimate level of care of skilled nursing. But it, the persons who lived in the independent units would be paying and necessarily paying for as part of their rent, the food service for themselves, meals every day, or at least, I don't know, some places only have one meal a day. Is that, just a quick answer on that, is that correct?
I think Lee, Lydia or Ted.
That is correct, yes. It's, it's going to be an option in our mind for people living in the independent part of the building to take their meals there. Our food production, our foods facilities tend to be really excellent. We have an excellent food program that is kind of one of our strongest points. And so, we're going to allow people to take advantage of it if they wish. But you're, you're right. I mean, there are going to be cases where people want to cook their own meals. They'll have kitchens to do that, or go off, you know, go to, go to Needham Center and, and have a meal there or something along those lines.
Okay, so it's an option. Okay, thank you. On the landscaping along Highland Avenue, I, I was looking at the difference between the existing and the proposed, and it seems as though some large deciduous trees that might presently provide shade, which is a good thing on public sidewalks, are proposed to be eliminated and, and some decorative evergreens put in instead. And so I was a little concerned about that, and maybe that could be commented on. I'm not sure about these patios right on Highland Avenue. Would it be balconies too above on the upper floors? It doesn't seem like a very nice place that somebody would want to sit out right there on Highland Avenue on a patio that's a little bit below grade. I don't know, it just doesn't strike me as all that appealing. Maybe if I saw better or bigger trails, but.
Yeah, Lee and Ted could address that, but I know my reaction as a 70-something is that if I had a chance to have a patio versus no patio at all, I'd want it. Just the idea of being outside, even if it's on ground level, I, I, I would consider it an amenity. And particularly since, you know, if elderly people are isolated and they can see traffic in the, in the streetscape, it would be a plus.
Part, part of our philosophy in, in where we pick sites is finding a spot that's, that's, that is, is part of the, a little bit of part of the action, often in transitional zones between residential and commercial. With our population, you know, more and more our folks are, are not going to into, going to life, but life is coming to them. So we try to put the, we try to find settings that allow us to have kind of the best of both worlds in that regard.
I mean, if you go down there today, you have this tall hedgerow, I think a lot of it might have been cut down because I think it was moving over too much. So, Welltower, who I, I got to tell you, just a little commentary, the fact that they've maintained that building so well, it's been empty for two years. I mean, I, I think everyone's fortunate to have them as an owner. I mean, you know, the, the elevators, everything's operational. They've maintained all their inspections that, sorry. But so right now, you go in, there's this major hedgerow, and for 300, 400 feet, after you pass the last residential home heading north, it's very isolating. There's a lot of school kids that walk by there. The functionality of these patios, again, it's up to the individual. They're small. They're under 100, they're approximately 100 square feet or less. It's going to accommodate a small little table and two chairs and a plant, but it also activates that streetscape. A lot of people like to sit out for a little while and get the air and see what life going by them. And, and we just thought to vitalize that streetscape, it's, it's a nice little amenity for the building.
And Roy's right. I mean, patios are pretty universally loved by people in, in our experience. They're always popular. They're always the apartments that go first regardless of the situation.
Okay, so it's just patios, not balconies as well?
No, 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 only, only on the grade level, period.
On the grade level, okay, just wanted to.
It's very, it's very interesting. If you go inside.
You know what, I'm going to cut you off. I'm just going to cut you off because on the sake of time.
Right.
I don't want to be here all night. Okay.
Right. May, may I ask two more questions, though?
Please, go ahead, but yeah.
Because it's a completely different subject. I'm sure you're aware that the train horn noise in that location is very, very loud. Are you planning noise reduction in some way for the building? And then also, I, I just tell you to think about this. The town, there's, if the town would pay, a couple of years ago, it was estimated $1.3 million, we could eliminate the train horns by upgrading the safety of the intersections. Think about whether you'd contribute, let's say there's five intersections, you'd contribute 1/5 of that cost if the town would do that. I'd just like to, you to think about that. But the other thing that has to do with, with the special permit is, on the wording of the zoning bylaw amendment that you propose, it does seem as though all buildings and uses that are currently allowed by right in the underlying district would, like this building, be able to be built to a fourth story. I see that you have a setback, and I like that, you know, the fourth story has to be set back a bit. But the 44-foot limit and the four stories would apply to any type of use, whether it would, you know, and I realize it's only for this parcel, but who knows what might happen, you know, 20 years from now. And, you know, maybe, maybe somebody will propose tearing the building down, putting up something completely different, or renovating the building to something completely different. And it just seems to me another reason why we should be focusing more on the use of special permits for the development of this, of this parcel. So that takes care of my comments. Thank you.
Could I just speak briefly to that last point that Ms. McKnight made?
Please keep it brief.
Yeah. Okay. So, some, some limitations that are built into this proposed bylaw would prevent, you know, a, a full fourth story building because as the bylaw is currently written, the fourth story can only be 35% of the floor area of the, what's now the roof. And there are also FAR limitations, and there's underlying bulk limitations. So you're not going to be able to build some fourth, four-floor monstrosity, you know, department store in the future. So, we do, we did try to take into account the fact that people are not going to want, you know, the possibility of this use disappearing 15 or 20 years from now and some other use coming in and building, you know, a large fourth story building.
All right.
Okay, thank you. It's hard to get every nuance when you're quickly reading something before a meeting. I appreciate that, that response.
All right, Lee, let me ask you. On our next, at our next meeting, which is June 2, right?
Yes.
Do we have time to discuss this?
Yes, I'm doing the second. Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, I'm going to suggest that we now sort of adjourn this discussion, and we'll pick it up again on June 2. For myself, I would simply say, I like the project. I like almost everything about it, but I need to really study the proposed bylaw. I have not had a chance to go, go over this as carefully as I would like. So having a couple of weeks is going to help me do that, and I, hopefully, I'll be in a better, much better position to actually talk about the wording of the proposed bylaw. And we'll go from there. It'll, it'll help all of us to digest what we've heard tonight. We heard a lot.
Okay, that, I think, I think that's fine. The one thing that might be helpful is if you or any other member of the board, you know, will commit some suggestions or questions in writing to, to Lee, and then we can get that, we would have some advance time to think about it as a response, which would make the process more efficient as opposed to just hearing things for the first time at the June 2 meeting. I, I know everyone's busy, but if, if, if that could happen, that would be helpful.
Well, I will suggest that if we, if people have time to do that, I think it's a good idea. But I, I'm not going to commit to you that we'll get all our questions to you in advance.
No, just, just if you can.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for that presentation. That was quite substantial and quite effective, I thought. It was quite good, good presentation.
We're very, very excited about the, the potential of this project and working with Welltower, working with the town in Needham. We really appreciate your time.
Very much so.
Thank you all. And hopefully, you'll be available to be with us on June 2.
I'm looking forward to it.
Where else could we go? Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Molly. All right. We're going to move on to our agenda item number four, which is a discussion of annual town meeting zoning articles. Lee, where are we on that?
So, where we are on that is we have two articles that have been submitted by citizen's petition. And, and I understand that one of those articles is now being withdrawn. That was the article, and it's going to be moved to a fall town meeting. And that was the article that proposed to rezone a portion of land off of Hunting Road, I think, from single residence, from single residence A to single residence B. So that zoning article is not going to be acted on at the annual town meeting. So a recommendation from the planning board is not going to be required. The other article relates to rezoning for Children's Hospital to allow for the pediatric medical facility along with the parking standard that was being established in that zoning. The selectmen have yet to sign the pilot agreement. We anticipate that that's going to get finalized next week. And so, the planning board would vote its recommendation on that article on June the 2nd in advance for town meeting. So at this point in time, I think what would be helpful for me is if I could have a volunteer from the planning board who is prepared to speak, to actually make, to speak at town meeting and make the board's recommendation on that, on that article. The hope is to be able to, after we vote on the second, to be able to prepare some kind of recording of our recommendation. The town is trying to put, make available on video through YouTube, the presentations on the articles and any board presentations in advance of town meeting so that we can have a more effective town meeting.
Well, I know Bruce is not going to volunteer because he's not going to be with us at that point. Anyone else want to jump, jump in?
Um, I, I'd be glad to make the presentation if the other board members would like that. But of course, I defer to other board members who would prefer to do it.
Well, I'm happy to let you do it, Jean. Anybody else want to raise their hand, including you, Adam?
Is this like a, an initiation process like the Supreme Court?
Well, not if Jean's throwing her hat in the ring. She's prepared to do it, so.
I would love to volunteer, Adam, for this. I, I would, I would consider it for myself if we were. I, I would, I would consider it for myself if we were in the regular situation where I was making a presentation at town meeting. But, but the concept of having to do a video presentation beforehand, it, believe it or not, even in this economy, my work schedule is incredibly tight right now. And to be able to prepare something and make a video prior to June seventh, which is only a couple of weeks away now, I, 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 I just don't see
Okay.
the time to be able to do it.
All right, I hear you. And I know Ted's situation. I don't think he's, he's in any situation now where he's, he's gonna have the time.
I'm, I'm happy to help. I'm happy to help, and if you'd like me to do it, I'm happy to do it.
Well, you know, I guess my, here's my suggestion. Jean and Adam, do the two of you just wanna sort of talk outside this meeting and
Sure.
determine whether one or the other, or maybe both could contribute. I don't know.
Sure.
And you could let us know what you've decided June second.
Yeah, and I'd like, you know, I'd like naturally to talk with, with Lee about what is expected in the way of, of the visual presentation as well as the audio.
Well, I, I think the children's is basically making the presentation on this article. It's, it's their article. I think we're just gonna be indicating to town meeting what our recommendation is on the, on the zoning article and probably explaining, explaining why we've come to the conclusion we've come to.
Okay, so we won't have to be interacting, you know, video with audio and all that, putting it on.
I think that, I think that our presentation is probably just a narrative presentation. You know, what the planning board's position on the article is and why we've reached this conclusion.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk, Adam, sure.
All right, I, I think that's all we need to say about agenda item number four, then.
Mr., Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I see that Mo Handel has raised his hand on the panel screen.
I didn't see it. Okay, great. I do, I see that now. Okay, Mo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We took this up this, this evening at our meeting. Pending the finalization of documents and your action, we did adopt in principle the fact that the select board unanimously supports this article. And we'll be taking final action once you have acted and once we have the pilot agreement and the memorandum of understanding memorialized, finalized.
Thank you for that update, Mo. Okay, we are, we are gonna, we're gonna vote it. My understanding, as soon as we hear that the pilot agreement and the post-agreement are approved and signed. That satisfactory to the select board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything more on this, this issue, these issues? All right, number five. Dining opportunities to support local restaurants. All right, so within the last two weeks, there has been just quite a bit of discussion among a couple of members of the selectman, select board, Mo and Mary Ann, who are both with us now on the call. Myself, Lee, our chiefs of police and, and fire, Tim McDonald of the health department, Sandy Sin Cotta, and perhaps others, I hopefully I'm not, I'm not forgetting anyone about this issue. We know that currently our restaurants, as well as other retailers for sure, are suffering badly during this pandemic. And while the government's orders are in effect, we also know that the governor appears to be starting to open things up, allowing certain businesses to open up in careful ways. And under the expectation that more opening up is gonna be happening in the current week or two or three. The idea that has arisen here in Needham is that it would be terrific if we could, in whatever way possible, lend a hand. At first, at least to the restaurants, and then hopefully to other retailers. And one idea that has been thrown out there is that we could try to open up and use certain public areas such as the town common, the common at the Heights, the area beside Needham Bank, that mall, little mall area. Initially, we were talking potentially about some parking lots areas as well. The, the point being, areas where restaurants could, could have people take food out and go and sit. Not, not for outdoor service, but outdoor eating areas, almost like a food courts without service. We put our heads together, try to figure out what all the impediments might be and try to figure how we can remove those impediments. We've asked the chief of police, we've asked the fire chief to give us their advice as to what things could be done safely, what, what things they would not want us to even try. And we got some real pushback that, for example, closing off Chapel Street creates some real problems. And maybe closing off any streets is problematic. So the thinking is, and the question is, to this board in particular. I mean, there's a lot of details that we can talk about, and Mo and Mary Ann in particular can add a lot. Sandy Sin Cotta has been on the phone, I think, for days at a time, trying to work on the details and see if the restaurants are even interested in this kind of a thing. But the, really, to try to focus our discussion a little bit. One idea is, well, let me add one other piece to this. Obviously, it's hard for the planning board to act very quickly due to process constraints that we have, notice constraints, hearing constraints, on special permit addendum and amendments, things like that. But the, the idea here is to act quickly, very quickly. And so the idea is, one idea is that perhaps we could adopt a policy of non-enforcement of any special permit conditions or restrictions currently in existence that would prohibit that kind of outdoor seating for eating and potentially, and drinking, and maybe even drinking alcoholic beverages. So long as it's done on certain town-owned lands by permission, and so long as state and local health and safety requirements are met. So that's the thought. It's not necessarily the only thought that people might have. People might wanna talk about other ideas, but if we're gonna get something done quickly, I think it has to be done in the nature of adoption of a policy. But having said all that, before we open it up to any discussion, question, thoughts, whatever, Mary Ann, Anne, or Mo, do you wanna add anything, or Lee? And then we'll, we'll talk about it.
Mo, do you wanna speak first, or?
Why don't you speak first, Mary Ann, and then I can add anything that I think you haven't covered, which will be probably minimal.
Okay, well, I think what I would say is that the select board discussed this this evening, and we are hopeful that you will take action because we would like to start something like this this weekend. And Sandy has reached out to all the different restaurants. And the other question, of course, starts to come from businesses, understanding as well what they can do. And we've sort of said restaurants are first. But we'll be happy to listen to businesses make some proposals next week for how they think they might be able to serve clients. And as long as it's in keeping with the guidance from the governor and from the state, you know, we will do what we can to support them in creating options outdoors which are recognized as safer for both employees and for customers as long as they're practicing with their masks and social distancing. So, but we think this would be a great option for people to have it outdoors. We think it gives them, you know, something different to do. We're very clear that this is not bring your own bottle. This is not buy your liquor at the liquor store and go sit downtown. It's not walk around with an open container. But it's, you can pick out your takeout with something to drink with it, and you can go enjoy it in a nice environment, outdoors on the common, if you would like to do that. So looking at the common, the Heights Common, and the passageway that exists next to Needham Bank as being the first places that the town could roll this out. And the town's GIS system has worked to create some acceptable spacing with picnic tables for a layout that could be done in those locations. So.
Yeah, before we turn it to Mo, we may have something to add. Obviously, we talked about the thing, other things, such as how we're gonna keep it clean.
Correct.
How, how are things gonna be cleaned up after each use? Should we have a tent in one or more places? Are we gonna need additional police presence for people, particularly in the downtown area, crossing from restaurants, crossing the streets into the common? There's a lot of detail, obviously, to be worked out. But, you know, our focus, I think, ought to be, are we willing to adopt some kind of a policy quickly tonight that would permit that kind of planning to go ahead? Mo, did you wanna add anything?
Yes, I think we, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're looking at this as a work in progress. So we're gonna be learning from how we're doing this. We're gonna see problems we didn't anticipate, and we'll address those. And we'll see advantages that we might not have seen before, and we'll try to improve what we're doing. But this is time-sensitive, and it's time-limited. So when the emergency allows the restaurants and the other businesses to return to a somewhat normal existence, then we can start to work back from this. But we need to do this quickly if we're going to do it because we wanna maximize its impact. And we wanna keep faith with our restaurants, which your board knows as well as any other board in town is one of the keystones of our downtown and our other business areas. It's what's made Needham very successful in its economic environment. So that's what we're trying to do, and I think we've all gone a little bit beyond our own comfort zone. But we've also been very careful in trying to figure out what we can, can do with what we have. And we're hoping that you will support us in this.
Lee, did you wanna add anything before we open it up?
No, I, I think that, I think you've covered it. I think there's probably two areas that the planning board can act. And I mean, one area is, is the seating that's being done really on public spaces, which is really under the jurisdiction of the selectmen because they control those spaces. And so maybe one policy as it reflects, you know, our recognition that the selectmen control those areas and put them in charge of the permitting and the implementation in those areas. And then I think the other piece kind of relates to those restaurants that we control where the uses ultimately might be proposed on private space, on existing parking lots or in front of existing stores. And so some exemptions from our underlying special permits, I think, maybe even recognizing that the Board of Health has the discretion to perhaps declare this as an emergency and to, as a public health reason and to, and to promote social distancing, allow for seating to happen in a more spread-out manner under just, just the emergency, and kind of gives us maybe the foundation and the legal framework to, in a sense, waive our own regulations.
The only thing I would add, and then I'll open it up to questions and thoughts, is the, the thinking, I think, is that this would run from this coming weekend through, through Labor Day.
Right.
So it's very time-limited here. All right, that's enough introduction. Bruce, I see your hand up first. Go ahead.
Well, I think in terms of the planning board, you need to, well, it's not Needham's emergency. It's the, it's the state's emergency. And it's the governor has the authority to declare an emergency. And I think, in terms of time, I think it has to be any lack of enforcement or waiver or needs to be tied to the declaration of emergency of a governor. So that should be the time reference, not, not a date. So if the governor, you know, on August fifteenth says there's no longer an emergency, I, I don't, I think we, I think it has to be tied to the governor's emergency to be justifiable.
Okay, I mean, I think that's arguable, in my sense. And the reason, the reason is, even when he lifts the emergency order, I think there's still gonna be quite a reluctance among members of the public to, to go out and use facilities that they haven't been able to use. I, I think people are gonna be slow to return, and they need a push or a pull to, to get them to do that. So that, that's just my thinking, so.
Well, that's all true, but how does that give us authority just to say, okay, well, we're just not, we're just gonna ignore our own special permits? I mean, for the most part, it really is the board's selectmen because most of the plans that I saw were on public property, not private property. So that's easy.
Adam? I think you muted again.
Sorry, thank you. I have a couple of thoughts. One, I here tend to agree with you, Mr. Chair, that this should not be specifically limited to an act by the governor or the state legislature. And that, and I don't know to what extent we have our own legal authority to declare an event of force majeure so that we, as a, as a town, can choose to implement these measures and maintain them for as long as we decide is necessary. In other words, it's possible that by phase three or phase four, like Bruce was saying, April fourth or fifteenth, that the governor may release his, his order. And yet it still may be prudent and considered healthy to continue this action. And if there's another way of, of enabling this action through a for, declaration of force majeure or some other legal scheme, I think it would, whatever we can do to help these businesses, I think honestly, this is a desperate hour for many, and it would be a helpful, a beneficial action. My, my only comment, my only other comment I had about that was earlier tonight, we had a conversation with members from the farmer's market. And they're gonna be all over, you know, the area on the town common around Garrity's Way. So, you know, what do we do on those weekend days to, you know, to ensure, you know, the balancing of those two competing interests?
I think as to that point, Mo has a response. Go ahead.
First of all, they're not really competing interests, and we did have conversations with some of the people in leading the farmer's market. They don't have a problem with this. They actually would appreciate having seating options for some people who visit the market and are tired and need to sit down. It's not a competing interest, and they're only open on Sunday mornings.
And there is space, what we're talking about. There is space.
Say again?
There is actually physically space to put the tables out there and the farmer's market and accommodate.
We can accommodate both handily, and we have a commitment to the farmer's market as well as to the restaurants. This is a win-win for all of the downtown interests, as far as we can determine.
Mary Ann, please?
Sorry, I used the raise and function, but that doesn't work, I guess, on this one. So the other thing I was gonna say, in addition to the fact that we actually did look at the layout for the farmer's market to determine that both uses were compatible, is that phase four of the governor's plan refers to having a vaccine available. It's gonna be a while before you get to phase four. We're gonna at least make it through the summer.
I think that's pretty clear, yeah. I think that's pretty clear, yeah. Paul?
Yeah, first of all, I have to apologize. While Marty was speaking, I lost my internet connection and so I missed a lot of what you said. I don't know if you noticed, but I kind of disappeared for a while.
I did.
Yeah, so I, I'm kind of at a little bit of a loss here. It seems to me that regardless of the emergency order by the governor, we have the authority to waive our own regulations and rules at any time, for whatever reason. Well, subject to the statutory requirements about what a planning board can and cannot do, but you know, we, we have our own, you know, we can, we can decide that certain, certain areas of special permits can be waived for a short period of time, regardless of the reason. If the statute allows us to do that in general, I don't see why we can't do it.
But Paul, it's not, I mean, you didn't hear, I guess, what I'm saying, but it's not even a question of waiving our rules. It's a, I guess what I'm proposing is adopting a 90-day policy of non-enforcement.
Right, and I don't know, you know, contrary to what Bruce said, I don't know why we don't have that, why we don't have that authority to do that. These are our special permits and we have the authority to waive enforcement of the special permits that we've issued, it seems to me. I don't, I don't know whether there's a law that says we can't. That's number one. My second comment is, you're talking about having this through Labor Day?
Yes.
And September can be a beautiful month. I, I, and I'm expecting that this is going to continue well into the fall. I would be in favor of going until Columbus Day.
Of course, there's nothing that would keep us from extending it.
Right.
Ted, any thoughts?
Yeah, sure. As usual, I take the non-lawyer's point of view. And I think the word that we've heard the most frequently in the last couple of months is that we're in an unprecedented situation. And I don't think we should tie ourselves in knots worrying about the legal dos and don'ts here. You know, I would support doing whatever the planning board could do to help the Board of Selectmen with this issue, to help our restaurants, to help our small businesses. I think this is the least we can do. And I would, for one, not allow myself to be overly concerned about either the details or the fine points of the law. I think that this is something that we should absolutely do. I think that whether it's Labor Day or Columbus Day, I don't think any great harm will come to the town of Needham if we do this. And I think some benefit could come to our restaurants and our small businesses. So, I would endorse this 100%.
Okay, thank you. Jean?
Yes, I certainly endorse this approach. I think that a policy of non-enforcement may be the best we can do immediately. And to adopt such a policy of any condition of our special permit that would prohibit, well, first of all, I think one of the things we do is takeout. A restaurant, often we have a special condition that you cannot do takeout because we require an extra amount of parking for restaurants that allow takeout. So, you may find conditions like that in some of our restaurant permits. So, just that we will not enforce a condition of any permit that would prohibit takeout. And at the moment, I don't know that there's anything else that we would be prohibiting that is being proposed here because it's proposed that the food is takeout food.
No, I think what could happen on our permits is if the seating is put on top of existing parking and if parking is being eliminated and our permit was conditioned upon certain parking spaces being available on the use. So, I think, I think that.
I was going to get to that, Lee, I do understand that. But what's being proposed, it seemed to me, right now, by the select board, is that public spaces would be made available. And four public spaces were shown. And even if the selectmen decide to make sidewalks available to have people to put seats on sidewalks or allow owners to put seats on sidewalks, people are doing, are taking food out and using the seats provided, you know, or the space provided for seats on sidewalks. Now, if we go further and start and talk about restaurateurs being able to convert parking areas to outside eating areas, I'm wondering if the select board would be satisfied if we do give that some further thought and consider that at our June meeting? Because it sounds like that won't interfere with what's being proposed to get started right now, this weekend.
Mo, did you want to?
I do want to address that. I think we need to look at this period as a time when we need to make quick decisions to try to deal with a situation that threatens the viability of almost all of our, if not all of our food establishments and some of our regular businesses. So, I think we need to think that, yes, at some point, some of them are going to want to use their parking areas. We're not talking about table service at this point and I think that would require us coming back to you. But I think we need to look at this as a time when we need to address this issue and that's going to come up. Let's anticipate it. Let's move with this. If it's not working, then we're not going to be happy either. Our board isn't going to be happy or our public safety officials are not going to be happy. And then we can come back and say, no, we've gone too far. But I think we need the flexibility. Mary Ann also wanted to add on that, if I could ask the chair to recognize her.
I'm happy to recognize you.
So, I was just thinking, Jean, you're quite right. And we had initially hoped that we would be opening up some parking spaces. We can only do what we are permitted to do by the state. That's actually sort of the limiter in all of this activity. And the state, as it turned out, issued some guidance on Monday that designated parking spaces as confined spaces. And then they issued a note on Tuesday that said, well, that probably wasn't actually quite correct, but we need to issue new guidance. When we get new guidance, we would hope that we can move rapidly to find a safe location in some parking lots that might be available. So, we will want to look at that. I keep saying, I think we should look at all available tools that we have. And if somebody brings us a good proposal, we will want Sandy Sancata and Tim McDonald to take a look at it and work with the chiefs to determine that it meets safety standards in the town and that it's something then that we should consider. So, I think we need to be flexible right now. I think that benefits all of our small merchants in town.
I just want to.
Jean?
Follow-up question regarding the parking areas. I think there's a distinction between public parking lots that are owned by the town and which I put in the same category as the parks that you're talking about using. Yes, it's up to you. And we would not, you know, people can take their food out and eat it wherever they're allowed to take it and eat it. And that includes public parking areas, if you allow it. I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, could we wait until June 2nd to think about the parking areas associated with the particular establishments? I mean, if not, well, it's just hard to come up with the right wording just exactly on the fly like this.
Mo?
I think what we're asking here, of course, you have the authority to wait until June 2nd or August 15th, if you want. We're asking all of us to go a little bit beyond our own comfort zone and all of our own habits with respect to how tightly we regulate and to look at this as an emergency. We have an opportunity and opportunities are going to present themselves quickly. We have an employee in place, Sandy Sancata, and we have an employee in place, Tim McDonald, who will look at these proposals and decide if they're within the public health interest and will consult with our public safety officers to make sure that people who are sitting in parking areas, if that comes up, are protected by barriers so that they're not struck by vehicles. We need to be able to move quickly and we need to go beyond our own traditional way of thinking on this. We have an immediate emergency. We're trying to provide value to our merchants and we can't pump money into this. We can only let them do what they would like to do and think that will help their business in the short term. This is not a permanent situation. It's not going to be going on for years and years.
As far as the planning board is concerned, I think all we're being asked really is, if I can put it in basic terms, we're being asked to just get out of the way for 90 days.
Exactly.
We're being asked to make it clear that we aren't going to enforce anything that's going to keep these things from going forward, which also requires compliance with health and safety measures. We're not conceding that. Whatever we're talking about has to comply with state and local health and safety requirements. And so, Bruce, I'm sorry.
So, Mary Ann, did I understand you correctly that you thought, in all likelihood, the emergency would go past Labor Day, I mean, the 90 days?
So, that the state will not be in Phase Four.
Right.
Sometime long after the summer is over.
Okay, so then my concern.
In a period of emergency, in that sense.
Right, okay, so then my concern was moot if we're just doing the 90 days. To me, the justification is the emergency, we're doing this, so.
Sure. And the reason, Mary Ann, is because Phase Four requires a vaccine.
My understanding of Phase Four is that it happens after there's a vaccine available.
Okay. Jean, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I have no problem whatsoever with the time period. I agree with Mary Ann and others that the emergency is very likely to extend beyond September 1. And if it happened, but it didn't, I think our Board of Health has the authority and perhaps together with the select board to declare a local emergency. You see the city of Boston acting to enforce rules that are much stricter than the state laws. And I think, I don't know why they have the authority and we don't. So, I don't have any problem at all with that. So, I, I just worry, I guess, you know, well, for one thing, I want to make sure we're thinking of something. It's our building inspector is our enforcement officer. Can we direct the building inspector not to enforce the zoning, the conditions of our special permits? I mean, we can vote to direct the building inspector, but does, is that what we're going to do? Because it's really the building inspector who enforces, right?
Yes, he enforces our special permits.
Right, so we'd have to be careful with our wording, that we make sure we make that clear. And will we just say, how would we put it? Any, I see, I'm, how would we come up with the right wording just right now on the spot? Do you have it, Lee?
No, I don't have a motion.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly see, that's why I make the distinction between private property and the public property. And focus on any prohibition on takeout food that we have in our special permits is we are not going to enforce that prohibition on takeout during this emergency. Pretty simple. And then letting people go and eat it wherever they, wherever the town lets them.
Mo?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Thank you. I think you could say something and I'm not trying to craft your motions because I'm no longer able to do that. But that doesn't enforce outdoor eating restrictions with respect to takeout food in any of the, for any of the restaurants and outdoor business activity for the retail businesses, subject to public safety and public health considerations and let it go with that. I don't think we're in a finely tuned, perfectly crafted motion world with respect to this issue. We're in a, let's do something that lets these people know. They can be creative, we're going to have somebody look at what they're trying to do and make sure it's given our health requirements and that it meets the concerns of our public safety officers.
So, for example, wording might be, I mean, if we have a special permit, if our special permit directly addresses outdoor eating and only allows two tables or something like that, you know, just say that, oh, but many of our restaurant permits don't say anything at all about outdoor eating. Does that imply that it's not permitted? So, we would say, you know, to the extent that any of our permits imply that outdoor eating is not allowed, that sort of thing.
Well, could I say, we adopt a policy of non-enforcement of any restriction or conditions in any of our special permits, which would prohibit or bar, A, takeout food, B, eating outdoors or?
And then you need to add in, if I may, Mr. Chair, parking requirements.
I'm sorry, again, please?
Parking requirements because there are going to be circumstances where a restaurant could put a couple of tables out that are within public health requirements, that can be adequately screened from oncoming parkers, that could provide a couple of outdoor eating opportunities in parking spaces that you are counting in your special permit.
Well, so.
To let that go for a while.
There has to be a condition in this, in this policy that we adopt that the Board of Health and all safety officers of the town have approved these, I don't know, approved the plan so long as, so long as it's in compliance with their health and safety requirements.
They're, the board or they're designate because we're not going to take each one of these to the board. We're going to have town employees who are adequately trained and have the authority to look at proposals and say, yes, this is within what we're trying to do.
Not just any town employee, it has to be Board of Health.
The Health and.
Fire, police.
The Department of Health Director and the Support Services Assistant Town Manager are the two people who are going to be looking at this and coordinating with our public safety officials, the chief of police and the fire chief, to make sure that we're not compromising public safety. We need to overlook the parking requirements and the prohibition on outdoor seating. We're not proposing that we're, that you allow service right now, but we might come back to you and ask that restaurants can serve, provide table service. But we're not there yet. What we're trying to do is get people to be able to take an outdoor, a takeout meal and sit down outside. And there are going to be circumstances where tables near a restaurant, I'm going to make more sense than having somebody walk three blocks to the common.
So, maybe if, maybe if we said something like, in order to promote social distancing during the reopening phases of the economy, the enforcement of takeout seating or takeout, outdoor seating and parking requirements embedded in plenty more special permits are hereby suspended. The order maybe suspends the above named items for a period of 90 days to allow restaurants to relocate seating and provide for outdoor eating. And maybe there's something to the effect that, that these, that these waivers are conditioned upon approval through the Board of Health and through the Fire Department and Police Department and Building Department.
I think if you were, if you need to take it to those two employees. I think if you were, if you need to take it to those two employees.
Okay.
I think, those two individuals. Because once you start to layer in a, a board process, you can kiss it goodbye.
It's fine. It's just the time, not the cooperation of the time.
Mary Ann, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
I did. I was just going to note that I don't think you actually want to use 90 days. You may want to use the day after Labor Day, which is actually more than 90 days from now.
Okay. Jean?
Yeah, I have one comment on the wording, Lee. When you talked about special per, when you talked about special permits in your first clause that referred to special permits, I don't think you limited it to restaurants. Special permits for restaurants.
I would.
We don't want to waive parking requirements for all of our special permits.
Okay, okay.
Adam, I think.
I said, I said retail businesses, so.
Adam and then Mo, go ahead.
Sorry, I can write it up.
Are you muted again?
I'm sorry, thank you. I think the broader point is we, is we want this to affect not just restaurants, but other retail establishments. And I think Lee just revised that on the fly.
Yeah, Mo?
Yes, I agree with Adam. And if you, if you're in the downtown at all, I, I do a lot of walking now. There's no parking demand. If this starts to be parking demand, that's going to indicate a regrowth in the economic scene in our downtown. So we can revisit that if we start to believe that the parking is becoming inadequate due to all of the outdoor activities. But until that happens, and I don't think it's likely to happen over the summer, I think we'll be safe enough and this can always be revisited.
So that, that, we ought to have language in this policy that something simple to the effect that if conditions change within the period prior to Labor Day, this, this policy will be revisited.
Yes, but we also need to leave it open for the other retail businesses because the restaurants aren't the only piece of our economic fabric in the downtown.
Sure. Bruce, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not understanding this.
Jean, Jean, can you, we'll go to Bruce and then back to you, Jean, all right?
Sure, sure.
I just think what we're really doing as a planning board is we're not directing or recommending to the building commissioner, the enforcement of those provisions of the special permit. It's not that we're waiving or suspending because I don't think we can. If a private citizen complains to the building commissioners, building commissioner, you know, but we're not recommending or directing the building commissioner to enforce the specific provisions of the special permit. I think that's what we're really doing.
I, I, I think that's right. I think we want to talk in terms of non-enforcement, not suspension, not waiver, but non-enforcement. Jean?
I just don't, I just don't understand in what way we're helping other retail stores. I thought at first when people said, oh, it should apply to retail stores. What you meant is that the retail store might be next door to a restaurant. So the restaurant could use the retail store's parking area for tables for the restaurant if we waived the pack, the retail store requirement for parking. Otherwise, I, I just don't understand it.
Mo? Again, you're muted. You're muted. Can't hear you.
Yes, thank you, sorry. We have retail businesses in the downtown who could sell some of their wares outside of the store since there are restrictions on people coming into the store and social distancing and so forth. We've seen a little bit of that with Harvey Hardware. And at this one other business, oh, Needham Garden Center has altered the way it does business. We want to give them enough flexibility because we can't think of all of the things they can come up with that will help save their businesses. And again, we're going to be having somebody in the town manager's office, Sandy Sincotta, who's very experienced in permitting. And we have Tim McDonald, who's our public health director, who will look at these things and make sure that they talk to our public safety officials to make sure that we maintain safety, public health concerns. And we'll let it work itself out over the summer. We'll learn something from all of this. We may even decide to change how we do this going forward. But for right now, let's save these businesses and these restaurants.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Ted, please.
So what I really want to do is move the previous question. But what I'm going to do instead is I'm going to make a motion that the planning board supports this concept and instructs the chair and the director of planning to craft the exact wording and see if we have three votes in favor of the concept. I'm about to turn into a pumpkin and I'm not going to sit here till 1:00 in the morning and talk about the wording of this motion. So I make a motion that we approve the concept. We delegate the wording of the motion to the chair and the planning director.
A second.
I, I have a motion in a second. We have discussion.
I'm fully in favor of that motion.
Well, let's call a roll then, okay? I'm going to start with you, Paul.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Jean?
Oh.
I'm going to be a yes. Jean, I'm happy to have you involved in the, in crafting the wording as well, if you're available.
Thank you. I'd be, I'd be, I'd be pleased to be, to be involved. And I appreciate Mo explaining about the outdoor, outdoor display of merchandise. I had been going to ask our planning director to put that in the motion that she was writing. Because that's a separate issue from parking.
So given, given the way that motion was phrased, when we have crafted language that we deem acceptable, will that, just process wise, will we then need to run it by the board again for a final vote and approval?
I hope not.
I don't think so.
We're giving you authority. We're giving you and Jean and, and, and Lee and your making Jean part of the process, authority to do this. And then you can report back to us on June 2nd and let us know what you did.
All right, but our, our idea here is we, we want to get this done before the weekend starts.
Right.
Correct. Okay, Mary Ann?
And I was just going to note, Mr. Chair, that, that I'm hopeful that the language is relatively high level and not prescriptive, because I do worry about prescriptive if it gets to be that limiting some idea that somebody brings to us that would in fact be quite rational. We're hoping that we can be open to the ideas that the merchants in town bring us.
By high level, you mean broad?
Broad in the language, exactly.
Okay. Lee, you have a bunch of notes that have been jotted down during this discussion. Do you want to make a first stab at a very rough draft and send it around to me and, and Jean tomorrow? And we'll work on it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all for that discussion.
Thank you.
I, I regret to say this, but I'm going to check out.
Okay, understood, Ted. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us as long as you did.
You can check out, but you can never leave. He missed.
Okay. Lee, can we have a quick update on our agenda item number six, Highway Commercial One Zoning Initiative Next Steps? There have been some developments.
Yes, you know, we're trying, we are trying to move this project along. And one of the, you know, one of the concerns that has of course been raised is that we had planned to do a traffic study in the fall, which was going to serve as the, which was going to involve all new counts. And that traffic study was going to serve as the foundation for the development of an urban design, the urban design plan on the Muzzy site, as well as the fiscal impact analysis. And I think it's clear to everybody now that the traffic is never, it's not going to approach normal, normality in the fall. And so the question is, how do we advance this project with the information that we've collected so far? And, and is there really a strategy to do that? And so I think what we're looking to do now is to recognize that we're not going to be able to get the, the gold standard of a new traffic study with that level of detail. And what are the pieces that we have now in place that would allow us to go forward? So the idea is to use the, the data that was collected by Beta, which is five years old, updated by new traffic counts that were done by the state, which include the significant intersections in the area, Highland Avenue and Gold Street and Gold and Central. And to reframe the traffic study so that we're using that existing data and to follow with the profile that we would have used had we been able to collect the existing data, which will let us look at modeling at various levels of FAR under different density scenarios and use that to basically establish the density and use profile for the property. And then to move forward with Natasha, once that's been done through a process with a committee, to look at a revised urban design plan and the fiscal impact analysis. I think, and also to recognize that delaying any work on this to the fall, the initiation of that really kind of jeopardizes our ability to get this done in the, in the spring. So it's my understanding that the selectmen have now are considering moving what was the planning article that we had on the warrant for $65,000 in planning funds, putting it back on for action at the annual town meeting. And so if they were successful in doing that, it would give us the $65,000 that we had asked for for planning studies and we would just use it for this project. And we would not go forward with the article that we had put on the warrant that was only for the traffic piece of it.
Thirty thousand, right? Wasn't that 30,000?
That was for 45,000.
Forty-five, okay.
Because if we're not going to be taking new counts, I'm, I haven't talked to GPI, but I'm assuming that the cost of doing that work is going to come down significantly because we're not recounting everything. We're just having them use the existing data to assist us in doing the analysis of that existing data. And I think that the 65,000 would be adequate to do the traffic piece, the urban design piece and the fiscal impact study. And it will allow us with a committee to start the work, you know, in July, which I think would be an advantage.
The concern, of course, is whether this will fly by the FinCom or whether they're going to insist on an updated traffic study. And Mary Ann, do you have any update on that with regard to speaking to either of the FinCom people you were hoping to speak with?
I've spoken to three FinCom members in the last two days. And, and the answer is they all agree that the traffic study, as had been originally conceived, is not going to be useful. And they would welcome the opportunity to actually sit down and have a discussion about, you know, at the chair, vice chair level or, or something like that, about how we're thinking about going forward and in what ways traffic might be included or not included. But they agree that they don't see a purpose to doing the study that had been discussed. And using the existing data seems like the best data to use. So that, the, the three of them would agree on.
Okay, Adam?
Mary Ann, do you think that FinCom would support an appropriation to, I'm trying to come up with the words, that would, that would, that would give us some funding to come up with a, a new kind of metric to evaluate the traffic? Is that what you're saying, that the three members would support giving the committee some money?
So our proposal is to bring back the Planning Consulting Fund, right? So that the money can be used for what the group deems is necessary. That that's actually the most flexible solution going for now.
And that committee includes the members from the FinCom, correct?
So I, I think that that would be, you know, there would at least be a discussion as we start this project again, recognizing the current circumstances. That would be a chair, vice chair kind of discussion with the three boards.
Great. Excellent.
Okay. Do we need to have anything further discussed about this tonight?
I would say our board did not. We reinstated the article on the warrant, but we did not actually take a vote in terms of a position of support. We'll do that next week when we meet.
I don't, I don't know that there's anything more that, that the planning board needs to deal with tonight then. But this is very helpful to know what we're doing now. Assuming that the planning board goes ahead and the FinCom's open to discussing it, so.
It does seem like it gives us the right flexibility for dealing with the circumstances that we have.
Okay.
I think so.
All right, well, thank you for that, Mary Ann.
Okay.
All right, anybody else want to raise anything else about that, that issue? All right, quick discussion of summer schedule, Lee.
Alex, do you have the schedule?
Well, no, the question was to discuss it, but I'm wondering if maybe I should just email everybody.
Well, just in principle, you know, we normally, in, in the past, we would have a summer schedule where we would only meet once in July and once in August. And I'd like, we'd like to propose that we actually meet twice a month, if we can do that in July and August. And do these, and do the meetings, you know, through Zoom, because there is quite a bit on, on the agenda moving forward. So.
Hey, everybody okay with that? Everybody but Bruce, that is?
Bruce doesn't care. He's, he's out of there.
Right now, all of my summer vacation plans seem to, seem to be canceled.
Yeah, mine too.
So, you know, it's, it looks like nobody's going anywhere anyway, so we're all going to be around.
All right, and even if you're not, you can call in by Zoom, yeah.
Okay, well then Alex, I think can maybe email out some dates that might.
I'll email it, yeah, instead of, it doesn't sound like it'll be as hard as it usually is.
Great.
To find availability, but, um, and we might just stay on our normal schedule for those months. But I'll email everybody and we can confirm when we're in a less foggy state of mind.
Okay, great. Is it all right with every, I'm sorry, Adam, go ahead.
I, just because we're talking about a schedule. Is there anything that I should do? Or you would like me to do between the election and the date of the next board meeting following the election?
You will need to be, you will need to be sworn in. You'll need to make arrangements with Teddy Eaton on how to do that. Maybe Lee, you know how it's done these days.
No, I have no idea how.
But you will need to be sworn in.
I'll probably need to.
Literally, just go to the clerk's office.
I don't know if you can.
Go to the clerk's office, Bruce, is anybody there? Is the door open?
Well, they're there every day, but I don't know if they're open. But you're not going to be the only one who's going to have this issue after the election. So I'm sure they'll have some kind of protocol for it. We can find out and, and get back to you.
Other than that, Adam, I'm not aware of anything. I mean, I, you're clearly up to date on what we've been dealing with, so you're well informed. But other than getting sworn in, I don't know that there's any other preparation.
Because I think it's just a matter of days, maybe a week between the election and the next planning board meeting thereafter.
Well, we'll, we'll have to find out how you do it because you need to be sworn in so you can, in fact, you know, effectively participate.
And you'll, and you'll have to let me know also.
Got it.
I'm being reelected, so I'll need to be sworn in again.
Okay.
Good point.
I forgot about that, Paul.
Right, good point. Okay. Can we defer discussion of the minutes till our June 2, 2 meeting? Is that all right with everybody?
Please.
Well, there's nothing to discuss because Jean looked at them.
I have motions already, if you're okay with that.
All right, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. I move that we accept the minutes of February 18th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, I'm going to call a roll quickly. Bruce?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Ted is not with us, so it's a 4-0 vote. Go ahead, Jean, next one.
And I move that we accept the minutes of the March 6th meeting, asking the staff to look at the phrase "select board" and make sure that it is used consistently in the decision one way or the other. It's, it's two ways there, select and then capital B, board.
Got it.
Words, or select board, all one word with only the S capitalized. You know, whatever way is the way it's supposed to be done, do it that way. That's my motion, just make that correction and accept the minutes of the March 6th.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Bruce?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, 4-0 vote. Ted again is not with us. And there was a third set that was a draft, right? And you've.
Yeah, and she marked it up and we're going to redline it and give it to you at your next meeting.
All right, great, that was quick. Do we have any correspondence to discuss, Lee?
No.
And are there any reports from our planning director? And are there any reports from our Planning Director or Board members?
I, I have no reports, but I, I just want to talk to you about, just to make the mechanics of getting these decisions signed. And I was going to suggest that maybe if people have the capacity to make a PDF, that I could give you the signature sheets. Each of you could sign an individual signature sheet for the decisions, make a PDF of it and email it back to me, and mail me that, and email that back to me, and then mail me two originals that you had signed to my home, so we would have an original document. Is that something that would work? I'm just trying to figure out how I'm going to get these decisions done, since we're on, we're not signing them. And I can file an electronic version with Teddy with just your, off the PDFs, but I'm going to need to have an original for the registry.
Fine. Adam?
So Paul may be familiar with this too. When I, in my real estate practice, I have clients sign offers, PNS, and other documents other than deeds electronically through, through a software. This one is called Dot Loop. If it's helpful to you, Lee, and to the board members, I'm happy to make that available. It's confidential, and so each of you can sign, and then, Lee, you would have it complete, one document with everyone's signature.
Will the registry take that?
I don't think the registry will take it.
The registry won't. I'm still going to need the original. I'm still going to need for you to sign an original and mail it to me.
So you guys can do that, and in the meantime, you can have for the file and perhaps for Teddy's purpose.
I, I sign a document, if I'm in my office, I can scan it in as a PDF.
And I have a, I have a good, good printer. I can do PDFs easily.
Bruce, I'm going to need you to do it for these last, for these, for these two that we have. Can you do it?
I think so. I'm just a little confused. I'm signing one electronically, sending it back to you, then making a copy of one and signing it, manually emailing it to you. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
He wants two originals.
Yeah, I'm going to want two originals. I'll, I'll send you the directions, but that's what I'd want. And you would just mail it to my house, and I would get it here in Concord. I would have it.
And you're going to have to email your home address to us.
Right, just, you want to, just, just roughly give us an email with those instructions, just step by step, and we'll have it. Unfortunately, Adam, in this circumstance, I don't think Dot Loop will work because of the registry requirements, so.
I understand. Okay.
Also, Lee, I just wanted to say, I think where you and I left it was that for these de minimis change decisions that we did tonight, that they're not going to need a notary, but we have some hearings scheduled for June 16th. Those are going to be our first hearings, I think, during this situation. So, and correct me, Lee, if I'm wrong, but for now, we're okay with no notary, but for those hearings, we're going to need to.
I did, yes. These, these documents are not going to be notarized. The Board of Appeals does not notarize their documents. The reason is Alex's stamp is actually, she doesn't have it available, so we can't do it that way, even though we can witness notary stamps, notaries, I think, remotely. So because these were just de minimis changes, I, I don't have a notary on it. The ZBA does not have a notary on any of their decisions that are recorded.
We'll have to devise a plan when things do need to be notarized by mid-June, and so we'll have to devise a plan for how best to do that.
Yes.
That's right. And Daphne did say she could help us, because she has hers, and/or I'm sure I can get into the building by then to get it. And there, there are regulations, legislation about how to do it remotely.
Right.
So we will figure it out by then.
Okay, great.
If ZBA decisions don't have to be notarized, why do our decisions have to be notarized?
Well, I guess we, we've historically done it. Maybe we don't have to do it.
Well, I, I thought that the registry wouldn't take anything that wasn't notarized. So I'm surprised to hear that the ZBA decisions, if they get recorded.
They're never notarized. I, I, I've always notarized. I think I was instructed to do it when I first came to Needham, so that was the wrap by the Planning Board.
Do ZBA decisions recorded?
Yes.
Then the registry's taking them if they're from the town.
I guess. I mean, if you get a chance, Lee or Alex, you could call the registry and just ask them, will you take unnotarized special permit decisions?
Well, they have, they're, we, I know that they are. They're taking the ZBAs.
Well, okay.
Okay, so I'll send you the instructions then on these, on these two permits, the farmer's market and the hospital.
Okay. Anything else, anyone? Yeah, let's, can we do that by unanimous acclaim?
No, you got to call a roll.
Can I have a motion?
I move adjourned.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Bruce?
Aye.
And Jane?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
And me. Four to zero, and Adam, I think you're an aye also, even though it doesn't count today.
Correct.
All right, good night. Good night, everyone. Thank you all.
Good night.
I'll see you at town hall on Wednesday morning.
Yes, good luck, Paul.
Good luck, Ed. And vote. Vote early and vote often.
Right, right. Good night.
Good night, guys.
Thanks.